I wish I was there with him. I was in Belize last weekend.
Yeah, I was laying back.
That was. I asked him to go ahead and call in, but Mike said the computer system won't let him.
Livingston buying coffee this week. Is that a day or a week thing?
It's a week thing. I think it is. It's a week thing.
What? To buy coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a week. Okay, it's um, my light's still coming up. Magnify this a little bit because I can't see. Hey, how's everybody up? Are you ready?
Yeah, rock and roll.
Hey, good morning. Like to call the meeting to order and if you join me in the pledge, please. Zach, the lead of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, the first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. And I would like to make one addition to the consent agenda that just came in. It's um, the agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for us to receive to recycle asphalt. It's the same contract we've done on other years. Uh, the county attorney had reviewed it. So if you don't mind, we'd add that to consent today. So Park County can receive those materials.
And Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of the contract as well.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed with the addition of the Y dot contract. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay, consent agenda is passed. Hey, the next thing on our agenda is um, Carrie Smith and Anne Odie, um, Park County Clerk's Office. Public hearing on Wood River Ranch Outfitters LLC, a new liquor license application. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, commissioners. Um, I will be presenting today the new liquor license application for Wood River Ranch Outfitters LLC, doing business as Wood River Ranch. This will be located at twelve sixty-one Road four DT and Matitzi. And they are um, putting forth for a guest trans distinction, which means that they can have alcoholic beverages anywhere on their property. Wood River Ranch has met all of the requirements of the state of Wyoming Liquor Division, and they are in good standing with their business license on the state website.
Okay, thank you. This is not retail. It's just use on the premises.
It's for retail also.
Okay.
Yep, this is just an additional distinction.
Okay.
So they can do package sales as well as sales at the building, but they all did never take any.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification. It is a public hearing, so I would ask first if there's any questions from the commissioners at this time.
So um, Madam Chair, um, how many additional licenses of this type are available within the county?
There are twenty-five full retail liquor licenses. If this is approved, there'll be two additional.
Thank you.
So we'll have twenty-three.
Is there any member from the public that would like to speak to this issue?
Madam Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
They moved and seconded to close the public hearing in discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the uh, liquor license for Wood River Ranch.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve the license as presented. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I stop and grab a six pack when I come out of the mountains.
Now, wait a minute. We didn't have that discussion.
Well, it's it's either that or he just gives it to me.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, true, true.
And it'd be much, that was what you did in the Saturday. And we got that handled. What's that?
I should have listened to you earlier on that one. I apologize, just saying right now.
She's the one that needs to remember there's a half hour limit.
Half hour limit.
Yes, sir. Got it.
Right, right.
Um, we have a few minutes. So while we talk about.
Well, you are, you're good.
Yeah.
It's like, thanks. I'm getting sued by that white job on game and fish and outfitter stuff, and I sent an emoji to a bunch of like several other guys and said, I don't often get, it was the Dosaki's guy. I said, I don't often get sued, but when I do, I do it. Oh, it's it's, I can't say hell. Well, it's been out there. It's out there. It's a some gal that thinks she was wrong by the game and fish and the outfitter board. Oh, so.
You're catching a little bit of back. Your mic, I think.
Yeah, you're giving feedback. You're cranked up too high.
How do I change that?
Just don't talk as close. I think when you back off, you're
Okay.
I mean, the sound guy over there could probably fix it, but.
What do you need?
No, Dossie was picking, giving some feedback. Oh, you, yeah, get with it.
He'll turn off my mic. Think it.
Oh, is there?
Well, Scott can start on it. Then we'll get the file. I do.
Wow, look at all those that come flying out.
Those are shown in, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I've got a page. Site characteristics, that is, the, there's a topo map shown in figure four. So this property is currently vacant irrigated crop land. And again, the topo map is shown in figure four, there really isn't any change in elevation for the most part. Neighboring land uses, that is shown in figure five, and neighboring land uses are a combination of agriculture, residential, and residential vacant, there are several subdivisions in the area. In terms of municipal review, this property is not within any municipality, so that review is not required. Terms of notices, the notice of intent to subdivide was published twice in October of last year. Of course, this is a public hearing, so there was a notice in the Pal Tribune notifying people this public hearing once on January eighteenth of this year, once on January thirtieth of this year. The letter to neighboring property owners was mailed on January ninth of this year. Staff report was shared with you, it was put on the website, it was shared with the applicants prior to today. Agency referrals, list, we, of course, notify a number of agencies. Were required to by our regs, then we notify other ones that may have a relevant interest. TCT responded, they said they have wireless service in the area, they may be able to provide internet and phone service. Park County Fire District One said they would be able to provide fire protection if necessary. Park County School District One said they would be able to provide bus service if necessary. Treasurer responded twice, their second response was an email on January fifth of this year. Confirming that the first set of tax payments had been made, and then the next set will be due in May of this year. DQ responded with their standard letter regarding possible agency requirements. Willwood Irrigation responded a number of times, first of all, in October twenty-third, they said they have no real concerns. They responded again on October twenty-fourth of last year. Saying that the irrigation, saying that the board will have input on the water distribution plan. And in that email, they thought they'd be able to have feedback by mid-December. Then Willwood said that they will require the applicant to verify water rights with the state and form a water association and have a water master. So the applicants did provide us correspondence dated November of last year from the State Engineers Office verifying they have water rights. We received several responses from Willwood Light and Power regarding electricity. Initially, in October, they stated they will meet with the landowners before confirming power. Then later in October, Willwood Light and Power had a follow-up with us. To confirm, it was a follow-up to a phone conversation that they had with the applicants. Confirming that Willwood Light and Power could serve one resident, one of the four lots with existing infrastructure available power. They also said, Willwood said, they're upgrading the infrastructure, and once they have that upgrade implemented, they will have the capacity to serve the additional lots. Skip Hart with Willwood Light and Power attended the planning and zoning meeting on November eleventh of last year. Talking about issues with line service. And at that time, he said they can only commit to serve one of the proposed lots. And also said Willwood Light and Power needs to upgrade to three-phase power in order to serve the additional lots. He said costs and timeline are uncertain. In a phone conversation that Jenny had with Skip Hart on December thirteenth, Skip Hart with Willwood Light and Power. He said they've been working, the developer, the applicants have been working with Willwood for a solution to upgrade to three-phase power. They have bids and they're working on funding options and with the applicant and the timeline is unknown. To our knowledge, I don't believe there's any power to any of the proposed lots at this point. So it's, it's uncertain when and if that, when that will occur, I should say. MDU responded, they said they have natural gas service available on the south side of lane eleven and a half in the county road wide away. Natural gas service lines are not stubbed to any of the proposed lots. MDU said, however, service line installations can be initiated once a structure is erected that will use natural gas. Then in another follow-up email on October twenty-fifth of last year, MDU confirmed that they will not stub service lines to any of these lots until a structure that requires gas service has been, has been constructed, and they received a request from lot owner. Park County Weed and Pest responded, Mary did initial inspection, found the presence of noxious weeds. And then there is an approved long-term noxious weed management plan that has been provided to us. We received a response from the Conservation District, a cover letter from October of last year. They identified two soil types. Both those are rated not limited for dwellings. Oh, I'm sorry, cliff sand and gravelly loam is rated not limited for dwellings. And the youngster loam is considered very limited due to flooding and shrink swell. Soils are rated very limited for septic systems to filtering and slow water movement. Neither of these soil types are considered to be prime farmland. Game and Fish responded, they had, they said they have no terrestrial wildlife concerns. They shared their standard subdivision recommendations. Public Works responded November of last year, they confirmed legal access is from lane eleven and a half. They confirmed no new roads are proposed. They found a field access exists, but the use, but access permit is not on record. Public Works said adequate frontage and spacing exists for individual lot accesses from lane eleven and a half. They said shared access for multiple lots, multiple lots are not required, but they do prefer them, and they're encouraged. Public Works said right-of-way permits from them would be required for any new accesses. And Public Works had no concerns with drainage and erosion control. The post office responded, they said that mail can be delivered for new addresses and mailboxes will be determined. We've not received any public comments, Madam Chair. There was a pre-application meeting that occurred in August of last year. We do have a title report dated September of last year. No new roads are proposed for the subdivision, solid waste disposal services are available through private companies. And again, just, just to reiterate quickly, Willwood Light and Power is not currently able to extend power to the proposed lots. MDU does have a service line on the south side of County Lane eleven and a half. In terms of any hazards, there is a potential for high-water tables in the area. Otherwise, we don't know of any, of any hazards, Madam Chair. Of course, Willwood Irrigation District has been notified. They are still, to our knowledge, they're, they're reviewing the water distribution plan. In terms of wastewater requirements, a subsurface evaluation was completed on lots one and four. One of the tests was done on October ninth of last year, one was done on October thirteenth. Percolation test data was collected on proposal lots one and four, that occurred on October thirteenth of last year. Perk rates were from two to six minutes per inch. Two to six minutes per inch on lot one, and nine minutes per inch to twenty-eight minutes per inch on lot four. Excavation cuts were done on lot one and lot four, those proposed lots on October ninth. In both of those cuts, groundwater was found at seven feet. So based upon that evidence, there is adequate separation distance that exists. However, we put in our staff report that engineered or non-conventional septic systems may be required. Because there might be high groundwater levels, again, it was found in October at seven feet down. In terms of domestic water requirements, the applicants are proposing individual wells to be permitted by the state. The applicant stated that the property currently does not have an existing well, and they were unable to confirm that they could collect a water sample from a neighboring well within a half mile. So therefore, water quality results are currently not available. And of course, our regs say if there are no wells that are within a half-mile radius, we take that to mean also there may be a well, but there, there's no water sample available. A note needs to be put on the final plat regarding no water analysis was conducted. So I believe, Madam Chair, I believe that's where we're at. In terms of ag impacts, the majority of this property is undeveloped irrigated crop land. Of course, we know that the applicants will be required to comply with weed and pest. They'll comply with, we assume they'll comply with the Willwood Irrigation District. Our conclusion is they're really not proposing any changes expected to, expected to name negatively impact neighboring ag activities. We don't think the subdivision will cause further weed development, pests, or litter, or domestic pest, pest problem, pet problems. And irrigation facilities are shown on the sketch plan. And again, this is, this property is within the Willwood Irrigation District, the district is reviewing the water distribution plan. There are no streams or rivers pass, passing within or adjacent to the, the proposed subdivision lots. Design and improvement standards, Madam Chair, lot standards have all been met. We do have, of course, now somewhat new the fencing requirement. So it appears like that's the fencing, state fencing statute applies. It appears that livestock can run at large on lands adjacent to the proposed subdivision, which means the applicant will either need to provide an existing fence, get written consent from adjacent landowners that a fence is not necessary, or design plans to construct a perimeter fence. And this subdivision is located within an ag overlay district. And you know, those paragraphs are essentially, it gives you the opportunity, if you see fit, to request or make suggestions to change this subdivision. Should you feel like ag will impact it negatively, or it will impact ag negatively. We, we wrote, our conclusion was, while some productive farmland will be converted to lots and non-ag use, much of the parcel will remain in ag production, is our conclusion. The planning and zoning reviewed this sketch plan on October eighth of last year, they continued that hearing to December thirteenth. They recommended approval at, or on October thirteenth of last year with conditions, those were in resolution twenty-three, twenty-two-three thirty-one. And I'll just try to summarize those conditions. Their second condition was a response from Willwood Light and Power. Our conclusion is the applicants are working with Willwood Light and Power. P and Z's third condition was regarding no water analysis was conducted. And so systems may be required. Our, our conclusion is applicants will either provide a water well sample, which I don't think they can, or that note will be, needs to be on the final plat. P and Z's fourth recommended condition was a review and recommendations from the Willwood Irrigation District. We said Willwood has provided recommendations and corrections to water distribution plan. However, the approved plan has not been received yet. And that needs to be received prior to final plat review. P and Z's fifth recommended condition was regarding the fence. We stated that the applicants have indicated they plan to construct a perimeter fence. That will have to be part of a subdivision improvements agreement. P and Z's sixth recommended condition was regarding the subdivision improvements agreement. Our conclusion is this will be required with the final plat. And it, at a minimum, it looks like that subdivision improvements agreement will have to include utilities and have to include fencing. P and Z's seventh recommended condition was about water wells. So the final plat must have a note. Oh, have a note, any proposed water wells shall be permitted by the Wyoming State Engineers Office. Their eighth recommended condition was regarding seasonal high, high groundwater. We recommend a note on the final plat, talking about the potential for seasonal high groundwater. Their ninth recommend, condition regarded the notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. So we, we believe that note should be on the final plat. Madam Chair, we have a number of findings. And our recommendation is, we recommend approval of the sketch plan of quiet growth MS seventy-six with the following conditions, number one is the applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities and special districts, irrigation districts, or public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance, maintenance of the system, but no case shall such utilities be less than twenty feet in width, easements must be identified on the final plat. Our, our second recommended condition was the applicant shall provide a water sample results from a well within one-half a mile to our department prior to final plat review by the Board of County Commissioners, or place a following note on the final plat. No water analysis was conducted, and the availability and quality of potable water is unknown, systems may be required. Of course, that note comes right out of our regulations. Our third recommended condition is, prior to recording the final plat, the applicant shall provide an approved water distribution plan together with confirmation from Willwood Irrigation District that a water association has been formed and a water master has been appointed to the Planning and Zoning Department. Our fourth recommend, recommended condition, the applicant shall provide evidence of, one, an existing legal perimeter fence as prescribed by WS eleven twenty-eight one oh two. Two, written consent from all adjacent landowners that a perimeter fence is not necessary. Or three, plans to construct a perimeter fence as required by statute, and in accordance with WS eighteen-five three oh six A eight. Following board approval, oh, I'm sorry, A thirteen. Number five, following board approval, the sketch plan, and prior to board's review of the final plat, the applicant shall submit an appropriate subdivision improvements agreement addressing all applicable required improvements, for example, utilities, fencing, and so on, for review by staff and approval by the county attorney and the board. Number six, the applicant shall place a following note on the final plat. Any proposed water wells on these subdivision lots shall be permitted by the Wyoming State Engineers Office prior installation. Then our seventh recommended condition is the applicant shall place the following condition on the final plat. Any access approach that is intended to serve the lots of the subdivision shall meet Park County Roden Bridge standards and will require a right-of-way permit from Park County Public Works Department. Eighth, recommended condition is the final plat shall contain a note regarding the potential for seasonal high groundwater. And as a result, engineered septic systems may be required. Number nine is the final plat shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of nineteen ninety-one. And number ten, recommend, our tenth recommended condition, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute eighteen-five three oh six. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. This is a public hearing regarding Quiet Grove Minor Subdivision Seventy-Six Sketch Plan. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this sketch plan? Is there any comments from the public on this proposal?
Madam Chair, I move with close of the hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Are you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Pleasure, the board.
Madam Chair, another question for staff.
Okay.
Kim, typically, there's, we approve or disapprove or add or subtract staff conditions, and I'm curious, at this point, am I not reading this correct? There's no condition on providing power, talk about utility easements, but minor, minors subdivisions require power, uh, power at the property line. At this, I know they're working on it, but that's not a condition, should it be?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Teal, you know, we do, if I remember, we do, I'm trying to remember what I just read. We do have a condition regarding the subdivision improvements agreement. I forget what that is, but that subdivision improvements agreement looks like it will be necessary. And what has to be in that is any improvements, and my, and it looks like at least power will be in that, and possibly, well, likely not gas, but certainly power and fencing will be in that subdivision improvements agreement. And that looks like it'll be required.
And I, I guess my point, Madam Chair, Kim, this will come back to us as a final plat review, at which time that they have to have power adjacent to the lots for, can't move forward.
Well, my guess is what will happen is with the final plat, at the same time, there'll be a subdivision improvements agreement for, for you to approve, for you to consider, and in that, there will be power if they already, well, if, if they don't have it now, it'll.
Madam Chair, they cannot actually install that until the subdivision improvements agreement and final plat.
I understand the subdivision improvement agreement is between the lot owners. This is nothing, there's nothing guaranteed from Willwood Light and Power that this is going to be put forward.
Maybe I can help out here just a little bit, the subdivision improvements agreement is between the lot owners and the county, and, and what I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, we can approve this sketch plan as is, and if power doesn't get there, we don't, we don't approve the, the final, or we don't approve the subdivision improvements agreement, so there is a stopgap that assures that this subdivision is not going to move forward unless there is power at the lots, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you know, yeah, Commissioner Limson, Madam Chair, you know, my memory is when often in the past, when there is a subdivision improvements agreement, you'll approve the final plat. You'll approve that subdivision improvements agreement, that has a number of months till, till it lapses. And even though you've approved that final plat, it does not get recorded. So it does not become official until that subdivision improvements agreement has been completed.
Okay. If, if I'm. I think if I understand Commissioner Teal correctly, though, in the eight or nine conditions that you read, that subdivision improvements agreement's not listed in those conditions that we should be watching for. I guess is, is what we were saying, you listed it earlier when it came out of planning and zoning, but it's not in those final ones on the staff recommendation side.
I think under, Madam Chair, under condition number five.
Let me look.
Land, yeah, following board approval of the sketch plan and prior to board's review of the final plat.
There it is.
Yeah. And subdivision improvements agreement, yes.
Yeah, to cover utilities, fencing, et cetera, so I think we're, I think.
Okay. Commissioner Teal, that's it. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the, this with the conditions presented by staff. Second.
It's been seconded to approve Quiet Grove Minor Subdivision Sketch Plan Review as presented with recommendation or conditions. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
We'll see you again.
Yes.
Thank you. No. But they can't sell a lot without.
In the final plat.
Yeah. It is ten fifteen. And at this point, the next thing on our agenda, Brian Edwards, Park County Engineer, Public Works Department. A discussion on the Sage Drive issue that we've received communications on. So we'd like to, to take a look at that situation. Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I thought I would do, this is really a meeting, we thought it'd be a good idea to, after we received the petition, it was essentially to look at the county improving the part of Sage Drive that we do limited maintenance on now, which is basically occasional grading and or twice-a-year grading and snow plowing. And, and then there was also a request to continue that level of effort down to, all the way to the south end of Sage Drive after it comes around the corner. And on, on the west end, I think there was discussion about trying to improve it or pave it. There's some discussions like that, so I thought it, just real quick, a little bit of history. This dates back way back, obviously, to the seventies, and, and when the county accepted the road for ordinary maintenance. Said, basically says for ordinary maintenance in accordance with the schedule, which relates to the needs of all the roads in said system. And that later in time, because as you know, we've got several of these, the situation that are, to have that limited or ordinary maintenance. And the Commissioners in the past have said that essentially means not replacing culverts, not adding material, but just grading twice a year and, and keeping the snow plowed. So that's what's been done since I've been county engineer. And again, that was done in nineteen eighty-two is when that, the county accepted it. Then there's, there's letters from various county engineers. When our kid, David Backken Tyler seventy-nine, where he talked to them about what they needed to do to improve the road to get to the conditions where the county would accept it, so I suspect that's what happened in eighty-two, is there was probably some work done. And I talk about pit run and, and fixing the road, so. Anyway, and then it's, it's specific in the acceptance agreement that the, that not the entirety of Sage Drive. There was, I believe, a couple subdivisions, but that first part, which basically says a hundred feet north of the crossing of the Cody Canal. So that's basically what we do now, is there's a good place, they turn around there, and we blade it, plow snow. And that's essentially it, but we've had meetings with some of the landowners, you know, in, in the past, since I've been county engineer two or three. And we just feel like there's a lot of, we've got these all over the county, and we're kind of hand, our hands tied with you know, it's basically a Commissioner's decision if we need to improve the road or increase the maintenance that we do on a particular road. So with that, did anything, that? We thought we'd kind of turn it over to the Petitioners, and unless you guys have any questions for me.
The only thing I'd ask, we've, I haven't seen very many of these since I've been on the Commission, but one of the things that's discussed sometimes also is, is some cost-sharing measures. And I think we've done that on one other too, if I remember, a section road up South Fork that they wanted improved. They came in with fifty percent or, or so of the funds too, so I guess that's an option that can be discussed.
Yeah, and another thing, another thing, Madam Chair, that I think I've mentioned to you before, we've talked to others like in Netrota County and some of these other places that have this situation where it's kind of a no-man's land, it's a, it's a road that the county does limited maintenance, but they, you know, but they're, it's technically not a county road. And what they did is they went county-wide and made basically something to where they did a cost-sharing program where they vacated the roads back to private, but the counties improved the roads to a certain standard. And then they become private roads, no more county maintenance. And, but there was a cost-sharing percentage there. I'm gonna say for the most part, the counties played a decent share of that percentage because they were vacating and there wouldn't be any more maintenance. But that's an option too, so.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any questions up front for the Commissioners?
I have one on the, where it makes the corner and it go into Sage Drive, and then also, I guess that would be that north. Is that particular section of subdivision road, if you will, public or private?
It's all private, the portion that's Schultz is, we don't maintain that.
I know we don't maintain, but there are public roads that we don't maintain on, my question, when it was approved, was it a private subdivision?
You know, I'd have to check that, Lloyd, I believe they're all.
That were approved with the Sage Creek subdivision were dedicated to the public.
Oh, they were.
They were not accepted by the county at the time of platting.
Okay, I was mistaken.
So they're all dedicated to the public. Everything that was shown on the plat.
One other thing, Madam Chair, real quick, we do know there's. One other thing, Madam Chair, real quick. Um, we do know there's a visibility issue at the top of the hill. Been talking to Mr. Spears and others that, um, that involves some brush and things that were just kind of hard to see on that corner. Chip told me our county road bridge foreman, he's gonna try to get in there and. Get some of that cleared out so they can see, but it'll probably be spring, summer before you can get to it. It's all ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brian and Ben, thanks for doing this. If you, I know it's, I know we're looking into the future, but if. If we accept what the petitioners are asking for, have you, is there estimated continued cost? That's the, is going to be borne by the county if we move forward with this.
Uh, yes, and I hadn't put any numbers to that, but it, it depends to what extent you, we improve it, you, they improve it, we improve it, whatever. Because as you know, chip seal requires cracked ceiling, patching. There, there are enough addresses on the road to justify paving. There's decent enough traffic, enough people that's moved in there. But yeah, that's an ongoing maintenance. I'd have to put some numbers to that. We figured, Ben and I figured to improve that road. Cause it's, it does get pretty bad. It gets washed board mud. We've driven, we know it pretty well too, but it's, uh. Uh, we thought what hundred fifty, about a hundred fifty thousand a mile to get it to a chip sealed. Road and it's about a mile that, uh, it's about a mile for the part we maintain now. So we'd be looking at, say, a hundred fifty thousand to get it up to a county standard.
Any other questions from the Commissioners right now?
What we're, what we're talking about is it's specifically Sage Drive. Where it makes the corner, what we're doing currently under ordinary maintenance.
Well, we're, we're doing ordinary maintenance up to about this point, but they're asking for basically all of it.
So we're asking. The request currently is above and beyond what we're already doing maintenance, not bringing it up to what we're currently doing. Up to a new standard, but additional road as well.
There are two issues in the petition. The, the one issue is to take on the additional maintenance. Um, which is, what do we figure another two, three hundred feet?
I think it's seven thousand.
Seven thousand linear feet if you add in, cause we go a hundred feet north of the canal right now. Okay. So there's part of the petition, um, Mr. Teal is that they would, uh. Um, extend what we're doing now to that part of the road. But then the other part was asking for improvements to Sage Drive, which would include paving. To bring it up to county standard.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all discussing the. And I guess, and how, how do you want, you can open the public first.
I am, um, and then we'll see what kind of questions we get. It's, it's not necessarily a public hearing, but we'll certainly take some, some public input. We have about fifteen minutes here. If those of you that live out there would like to. Have a conversation with us, but we do ask that you come to the mic and identify yourself for the record. We'll have her come first and if you'll come up second, sir. Well, that's fine.
So hello Commissioners, um, I'm a resident of Sage Drive.
Name.
Oh, Karen Horner. I just assumed you know me. So yes, Karen Horner. Um, so I was unaware of this letter. I wasn't asked any, my, you know, issues or anything. The biggest issue on the road is the speed. So if it's paved, it's just gonna allow people to go faster. I live on the bend at forty-one Sage. And of course we got the dust issue, but the biggest issue is speed. So by having it paved, it would just increase the speed. I think the county does a fine job maintaining it. We bought that property out there, fully aware of that when it was a county road and the ma- what the maintenance was and. We bought the property fully knowing that. Um, you know, our concern is if it's paved, it's just going to increase the speed. I know that the highest speed they've talked about was clocked at fifty-nine, sixty. We easily see that daily. So if it was paved, it would just increase more. And I think there'd be bigger issues. There's people that live on that road that have children and animals. So I am fully against paving the road. So I speak for me, my husband, and I would happily pay for a speed bump.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I'm Clark McRoy. I live on, uh, the corner of eight, at eight road, three DX on Gray Bolt and three DX. I've been there about fifteen years. I've noticed an increased. Amount of traffic. Obviously I've had a number of people go through my fence on that corner. My daughter lives and her family is at ninety-nine Sage Drive. So I've been out there. Uh, good deal over the last fifteen years. My grandson was involved in a head-on accident on that curve at the top of the hill. Within the last six or eight months with another neighbor who. Is very familiar with that road. My grandson growing up here, going to high school here. I do not know these petitioners. I've never met them. Um, I only learned about this, uh, petition recently. I spent twenty-seven years in the Bay Area, working on bridges and roads and highways, et cetera. So. I know what it takes to improve a road. That curve at the top of the hill. Is horribly dangerous. I've seen a school bus stuck up there three or four times in the last few years. I don't believe the school bus even goes up there anymore. And I'm not here as a complainant. I'm here only to support this petition for improvement of that road. It just seems to me that some soil retention in that bank could be done, even if. Major improvements couldn't be done to that road or, and I realize you folks make the, the sausage and have to. Dole out the dollar bills, but. I, I see a ru- room for some improvements up there at the top of that hill and there's also an intersection up there. That's particularly dangerous. I've had. A number of close encounters on that road myself. Uh, there's a lot more people going out there nowadays, you know, to recreate, to ride their horses. To shooting and, and hunting out there. A lot of out of state people actually that are not familiar with that road and the dangers of, that that road. Has out there. At any rate, I. You guys pay the power bill?
Apparently not. I'm not sure.
At any rate, uh, I'm here not to complain, but to support the petition. And, and I really think that at least some minor improvements could be done to that, um. To the top of that hill with that bank and some soil retention. Also, the water. Doesn't even make it to Sage Creek. Coming off of that bank before it even, before it goes across that road. The county guys that. Operate the graders do a very good job out there when they do it. But it only lasts for a few days or a few weeks, depending on the weather. So, um, my request or, or. Input would be to, to make some minor improvements or at least maybe cut that bank down and spoil off the downhill side. Cause it is extremely dangerous.
Okay.
And, and people, it's not that people are reckless up there. It's just. I met a horse trailer coming down once and ended up, up on the bank with my Jeep. So. I even had a young lady try and pass me down there on a gravel part of that road. When I was doing, I, I try and respect the people on the lower end of that road. Because there's a dust abatement problem in the summertime. And I guess she thought forty miles an hour was a, was a reasonable speed, but I. Didn't want to see my windshield broken. So at any rate, I appreciate your time. I appreciate anything you guys could do up there. On, uh, at least improving the upper end of that road.
Okay. Thank you. I think your next, um. Lady behind you. Okay. And then we'll go over here. We need to keep moving though.
Good morning Commissioners, and I'll just keep this short. Um, I'm Catherine Volmer. I live at thirty-seven Sage Drive. So I'm the third house in from three DX. Um, the first part of the proposal I think is absolutely reasonable. I don't live up there, but I can only imagine that, that it needs maintenance and that it needs some improvement on that corner. I mean, it, it is treacherous. My other issue though is, is the request for it to be paved. Um, I was the one that asked for the speed study in twenty twenty-two. Um, there have been three accidents in the, over three years that I've lived there. One was a rollover down the road. The, the problem with this road is, is the speed. Karen hit the nail on the head. If I were to call in traffic that I thought was speeding, I mean, I would probably call in at least ten people per day. The other issue with the speed study is that it was done in October. Not the summertime, not where there's increased traffic, not when there's Airbnb traffic. There's at least two Airbnb. Um, places on that road. So I can't even tell you, hundred and forty-eight cars a day isn't even, doesn't even touch the traffic on that road. County does a great job of grading it. You guys go out there, you do what you gotta do. Guess what? Two days later, it's absolutely trash because people go sixty miles an hour. I've put up signs, a speed limit sign was up and just short of calling everybody in. I don't know what else to do, but I can tell you that paving it would make it a drag strip. So that's kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for your time and I very much appreciate staff's time taking a look at this. My name is Misty Sporer and I'm the author of the letter. I'm at one oh nine Sage Drive. And I wrote the letter, uh, trying to surm-. Surmise all of the wishes of our neighbors. We had a barbecue this summer. Everyone in the neighborhood was invited. Some didn't attend. Some were unavailable at the time the invite went out. But we all got together and talked about the problems with the road and two issues rose to the surface. One is that there's an orphan segment of Sage Drive. So. As you've all heard, maintenance only happens to the top of the hill and it stops and that's hit or miss. Sometimes. They grade to the canal. Sometimes they come past the canal and turn around and go back. So it's really up to the individual blade hand. That's grading the road for that day, how far it's maintained. We're just for the first part, asking for equal treatment of the entire length of Sage Drive. So as shown on the nineteen seventy-two plat. That's the first piece. The second piece is the condition of the road. It is a tricky road. It's only graded twice a year. Snow is removed in the winter. There is a spring that seeps out of the side of the hill and comes down and, and eventually empties into Sage Drive. That's part of what creates a very wet condition out there and makes it hard to maintain the road. That seep spring is. Left to flow across the surface. So it rode, erodes the road very quickly down into Sage. Creek, which creates a sediment issue in the creek and it creates a mucky bottom at the bottom of the hill. The hill does have a blind corner. It's a difficult hill to traverse in the winter. It is washboard. It is. Covered with brush. So the minor maintenance that the county staff has agreed to undertake should help tremendously with some of the visibility issues. When it comes to paving the road, the letter. Towards the end suggested that that might be a solution to this issue. That's not necessarily the solution everybody, as you've heard, is seeking. Um, one of the difficulties is, is it is a gravel road and people do traverse it very quickly. And as we all know, growing up. In the West on a gravel road, the faster you go, the easier it is to lose control of your vehicle. So some of these instances. Of, um, interactions, accidents have been due to speed. It's also the gravel surface, whether paving solves that or not, or as Kat mentioned, creates a drag strip. We're just not sure of the right solution. We do know it's on the county's budget to maintain the road and paving may. Be a one-time expense that reduces the long-term. Cost of maintaining the road, especially with gravel washouts. And the washboard condition that it creates. So that is one solution. It may not be the best solution. But we were trying in this letter to, to represent everybody's concerns. So we very much appreciate the time to get in front of you today to talk through this. As well as staff's time to listen to our concerns and come up with solutions. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Spears.
Uh, yes, I'd like to reiterate.
Your name, please. Name for the record, please, on the recording.
Bob Spears.
Thank you.
I live on ninety-one Sage Drive. We've been out there about thirty-five years. And when we moved out there, we knew what the road was. And, uh, it's been issues. Jurisdictions and, and all of these things. But I think what we should concentrate on. We don't have to talk about a lot of long-range things. I think we have to talk about what everyone else has said about the hill. Uh, just two weeks ago, one of our neighbors went off the road. And down into the ditch. We probably have. Six cars a year. That Kat can negotiate that curve. The problem is it's a hairpin curve. The road is extremely narrow. And we're losing road all the time, every time it's cloud. And both sides of it are right against private property. They talk about paving and, and, and things like that. At the bottom of that hill. There's a seep on the side hill. And most of the year, there's water puddle at the bottom of the hill. Between the end of the bridge and, and hill. So I think what we have to do before we talk about paving or anything else. I think we should just simply concentrate on that hill. And see what we can do. We all have the same answer. We want a nice, safe community. But we have to take one problem at a time. And not try to deal with several things. Mainly because of the cost, the time and, uh, the availability. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate getting called on now.
Betta. Thank you. Sir, in the back. Okay. If you could speak into the mic, please, there's apparently. Yeah. Appreciate it.
I'm Jake Skeen and I live at one hundred Sage Drive. Um, I was actually one of the people involved in the head-on collision. Last, uh, winter. And I was coming down the hill about ten miles an hour, maybe less, five to ten. And the road was extremely icy on the corner on the hill. And the car coming up the hill was a two-wheel drive car, which I own a two-wheel drive car. Could not make it up the hill without holding its speed. So they came around the corner. In about the middle of the road. And slid out when they tapped their brakes, they slid out in front of me and we hit head on. Um, they were going, my guess is probably twenty, twenty-five, not. Over the speed limit, but it was. You know, it was a head-on collision and it's something that probably happens at least once a month to me where it's. It, the possibility of a head-on collision happens. I drive ten horse trailers. You know, ten horse, horse trailers up the hill regularly, which you can't taste, stay on the, your side of the road when you're coming up or down the hill. Uh, school buses can't stay on their side of the road. Uh, the hill, um, like Mr. Spears said, is the main issue. There's a lot of issues with this road. My kids, if the school bus doesn't come up the road, I have a, a ten-year-old and a five-year-old. If they have to walk to three DX because we can't get them there, it's a mile to three DX. And they would have to walk down that hill to get to the bus stop. There's a lot of issues that we could talk about, but I would say that. It needs to be looked over, surveyed. Something needs to be done. There's a safety issue. And I, I, the speed, I can see where the concerns are with the speed. But fifty-nine miles an hour or whatever is ridiculous. I don't know who would be going that fast. Who knows if it was a motorcycle or. Who knows what it was, but I can see where the speed is an issue. I don't think. Paving is maybe not a hundred percent the solution. It would be great if it was. The lower part of the road seems to hold up better. When you get across Sage Creek. And start climbing the hill and then to our house, which is the end of the maintenance. The maintenance goes down from that point on. The road stays better the first half. Quarter to half mile, but there's a lot of issues. I think it just needs to be looked at and it, something needs to be addressed, especially on the hill. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a gentleman sitting here and then we'll go to the one in the back and we do need to keep moving here with our agenda. So. Yes, if you would please, and, and if you could keep it as brief as possible, I'm sorry to push you, but we do have time constraints.
Yeah, my name is Bob Divicaro. I live at thirty-two Sage Drive. I live right on the curve of the new road. There's a couple, two issues I have primarily is.
Could you speak up please as much as you can?
First of all, is the traffic coming down the hill? I've had them run into my fence three times now. And then there was also an accident on the corner of our parcel and the parcel coming off of three DX. Um, there was an accident there just recently that took out all the fence line there too. The other question has to do with the speed of the traffic and also the, the dust control. And I've, I've talked to the county many times about the road, because we've lived there. We've had it since ninety-two. And the concern is at the dust, because we can't open up the windows in the summertime. Yes, that hill is a really significant problem on Sage Drive. Uh, our issue, because we live in a lower section, is the speed. And particularly the curve, because they've been through my fence like three or four times now. So thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. And we'll probably need to end it.
How's it going?
Good.
I, uh, my name's Sid Sporer. We live at nine Schultz Drive. So we are basically the border of the hill that everybody's been speaking of. We, we're the fence line border that. You know, when, when we've had these accidents over the years, I mean, I've born and raised there, thirty-seven years old. I've seen it my whole life. From the time I was a kid till now, it has been a problem. Uh, I do know the one thing, uh, our fences and stuff like that have taken a beating over the years. I've seen all the wrecks. I know exactly when they all happened because. I have had to fix the fence and do all that stuff there for a long time. because I have had to fix the fence and do all that stuff there for a long time. Uh, in my mind, and like I said, I, I, I'm kind of late to the party. I just found out about this earlier this morning, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare. So uh, what I do see the problems are is the, the paving up until the hill. I, I, I don't think that that's a bad idea at all. I think that's a great idea. Um, paving the hill to me, I think would cause a bigger problem. The biggest problem that I see with the hill is the bottom side of the hill usually gets the sunlight. So the bottom side of that hill will usually melt off when it gets icy. But during the day, it'll get just warming up at the top side of the hill. Then it'll melt off just a little and then that night it'll refreeze. So the top of the hill, the, the steepest part of the hill where you can't get enough momentum to get to the top of the hill freezes in solid ice, you know, and when they come to do the maintenance on it, they'll come and plow at one time. They don't necessarily get the top of the hill the greatest. So when you have to make that sharp turn in the middle, you lose all the momentum that you've got going up the hill. One, it is too narrow. I mean, I've got horse trailers, same as Jake. I've got horse trailers. I drive up and down it. And when it's wet and slick in the middle of the winter, you, you can't stay to the inside because you'll hit the bank. You can't get too far to the outside because you're in the wrong lane and it's a blind corner. So i- it is a major problem, but I will say the one thing they've done over the years is they've graded and graded and graded and pushed all of that material over onto our property and our fences where it's almost bowed our fences over, where we, we need to get a survey ourselves to find out just exactly where our property lines lie. But I do think widening the road would be a start to the solution. I think salting the top of the hill would be a lot of it because ninety percent of the, the problems that I see is people trying to get enough momentum going up the hill to go down or they are coming down the hill going too fast and they can't navigate it and they end up going off of the road through our fence. So
Okay.
I don't completely know what the solution is, but I do know that paving the hill in general, I feel like will make it twice as worse. The only thing that paving the hill would do is if they came out and iced it during the winter, when it got icy to keep it. But if that hill gets wet and it freezes, we will have a bigger problem on our hands. Now paving it up to the hill, I think that is a decent solution. But like I said, I, I've seen the wrecks. I've seen it. I do think the road needs to be wider because we do, I mean, my whole life I've seen it. People almost getting head-on collisions there all the time. And I've been gone for the last ten, twelve years. I'm here off and on in the summers. Uh, so I don't see it like a lot of these people do, but I can promise you all these people here have seen it just as much as I have and I grew up there. It, it's, it has been a problem for a long, long time. So, thank you guys.
Thank you for your input. Um, all I can tell you with today is we really appreciate your input. Um, certainly, safety factors are important to all of us and uh, we need to take all of this into consideration. We do meet with our road and bridge staff about by every other week or two to talk about projects like this. And after they've heard what they have today, they might have some ideas of some maybe short-term solutions, maybe long-term solutions, but we may be back with you. And if we're looking at major funding issues, we may be back with you asking about some cost share and things. If there's things we can do that we don't know that the county has enough funds to do at this time, considering over six hundred miles of road to do. So those are the conversations that we need to have. Um, I will also have a conversation with the sheriff. We've had this same conversation about speeding in an area in Powell recently and that's gone down a little bit with a few deputies around a little bit more often. So maybe we can help a little bit in that. They don't have a lot of staff, but what they do have is pretty visible. So we'll try, see if we can have help with that. Other than that, if there's anything else from any of the other commissioners, we appreciate your time and appreciate your support today and coming to see us during the weekday. Thank you.
I was gonna go take a look. It sounds dangerous.
Yeah, it is. It's not.
The problem is, 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 it's not.
But that's why I say.
I, I just assumed, so then, then, and I, I, I sympathize. But I, then, what's the next group that's gonna come in and say?
Yeah. Because they're dedicated to the public.
Certainly, we're ending right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
No.
We're ending just past the canal.
The agreement we have is to end right here.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, I was wondering. We're close enough.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing on the county commissioner's agenda is, um, Brian Edwards. Park County Public Works Department. Statements of qualifications opening for professional engineering and land surveying services for the septic waste receiving station. Project we've been working on for a while, so.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So as, uh, for the, for just a little bit of, uh, recalled, um. We're looking at replacing or abandoning and doing away with the Park County sewer lagoons, which are getting aging and, and, uh. Um, under capacity to, to handle the need and the proposed need. So we've been working with the city for, um, quite a while now, a couple of years. Looking at, um, what we can do at their facility to, to, cause they've got a modern, you know, everything they need there, but, but you have to deal with the problem of, uh. You know, septic systems are a little bit different animals. So we, of course, applied for funding through the state ARPA. And then with the county's match, we've got about four million that, uh, that's been all but, or I say obligated, obligated to me. Uh, to for the sewer lagoon project. And, uh, we're at the point now where we've advertised for professional engineering services. And, uh, we advertised, it's been about a month ago now, but they ran three weeks like it was supposed to, both papers. We also reached out to all the local firms and really any firm within, you know, so many miles radius. Uh, we reached out, so we really tried to get the word out. Uh, it looks like we just received one submittal. And it's from a local firm, Engineering Associates. And, uh, the plan, just real quick, is we're gonna, or we hope to, um. Philip and I, and, and we'll get a committee together, but we'll review this. Um, I like to say we could just accept it and go today, but, but with the state involved in funding, we would need to make sure all our procedures are good. But we will take that back, look at it, and the goal would be to come back. Uh, the third meeting of this month with a recommendation if we could. And then, uh, we'll try to get under contract and the goal that we're shooting for is to try to have, and this is all still being worked out, but to try to have the project ready to bid by October. Or have, rest say, ready to bid, try to have a, uh, a bids and a contractor's place by October, which should, should be doable, but it's gonna have to move right along. And then we've got plenty of time for the construction. We gotta have our last reimbursement in by October two thousand twenty-six to the state. I think there's another date, another three months, but they want all the reimbursements submitted by October first, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, okay. And depending, um, if you'd use the mic a little harder, I guess, if they're having trouble hearing behind. Um, if, uh, we also need to watch that funding on, on our side, if we're using ARPA dollars and which ARPA funds we're using, but it, we need to be cognizant of, of those costs.
Yes, and what's gonna be a little tricky is they want us to use the state ARPA funds first. And, and so there won't, it won't be a split thing. We'll, we'll just use that up first.
Okay.
With that, we'll open up our package here. It's very thick, several copies, obviously, and then digital. And, uh, this is a joint submittal. From Engineering Associates and they partnered with HDR. Uh, which is a national firm that specializes in a lot of different things. Um. So with that, that's all we got.
Okay, and where is HDR out of?
I'm not sure where they're headquartered. They've got offices in Billings and Sheridan, I believe. Well, Eric's here.
Uh, Eric Walker, Engineering Associates. Uh, we partnered with HDR. They have offices in Wyoming, including Lander and Gillette. Would be the project team involved here, along with some outside experts in the national.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for? So we'll put this on the agenda for February twentieth. Okay?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Okay, thanks. I don't know.
He's probably on the shooting complex.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
County.
Our next thing is at eleven fifteen, so. Have a couple minute break. That'd be fine. Oh, yeah, with our meeting place changing, that's true.
It's a big town, Phillip. You lost it. Oh, okay.
No action. We put it back on the agenda for February twentieth for action after they get a chance to review it with you. Okay? You bet. Are you on your own, Kim?
I am. Yes, Jenny was busy with.
She's coming.
Yeah, she was on. Oh, here she is. Nice.
Hey, um, moving right along. The next thing on our agenda, Kim Dillon and Jenny from the Park County, uh, Planning and Zoning Office. Heims Homestead Minor Subdivision Number Seventy-Five Final Plat Review.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicants for this project are Ron and Penny Heims. This property is in the GRP zoning district. The planning area is Cody Powell Rule. We did receive an application, a final plat application from the Heims on November twenty-seventh of last year. Then we received, and that included with that application, a final plat, we received a revised final plat on December eleventh of last year. You see that in figure one, the final plat. The requested action is, um, the applicant's request approval of this final plat. It will be a three lot subdivision. One lot will be thirty-four point eleven acres. One lot will be two point five acres and one lot will be three point zero five acres each for agriculture and residential use. Ownership is the Heims. This is, as I mentioned, this property is in the GRP zoning district. The lots as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. And the location of this property, that's shown in figure two. And the, the location is approximately three miles southeast of Powell. It's on the, the property's on the west side of County Road Six and northwest of County Lane eleven and a half. The property does have an address of five nine five. Lane eleven and a half Powell. In terms of site characteristics, proposed lot one is developed. It does have a permitted residence, a permitted septic, a well and an outbuilding. Shown in figure three, the property on the south and east side of the Elk Level Canal. You can see the canal running through the property. That property is relatively flat. Then the property does slope moderately down. From the west bank of the canal to the Shoshone River. No irrigation water rights exist on the property. There is a special flood hazard area. Flood plane exists on the west side of the property along the river. And you can see that also, it, that is shown also in figure two. And then there is also, Madam Chair, a patent. That pertains to lot seventy-five Z that's recorded, and that patent has placed a permanent restriction. And con, which constitutes a covenant running with the land that no land shall be cultivated or buildings constructed in the flood zone of the Shoshone River. Or in any of the land north of the Elk Level Canal. And you can see on the final plat where that restriction is. It's basically the, I wanna call it the southwest portion of the current property. That is where that restriction is. Terms of neighboring land use, that is shown in figure four. Neighboring land uses are a combination of agriculture, residential and residential vacant. And there is a small federally managed Bureau of Rec piece to the southwest of this property. There are a couple subdivisions in the area. In terms of municipal review, this property is not within a mile of any municipality, therefore municipal review is not required. Public notice, of course, was not required for final plat review. And no other notices are required. We've not received any public comments for today's meeting. So the board accounted commissioners reviewed the sketch plan for this proposed subdivision. On July of last year, July eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. There were conditions noted. That resolution was two thousand twenty-three forty-three. So I'll just mention, um, most of those approval conditions, Madam Chair. So the board accounted commissioners, when they approved the sketch plan, note their first, um. Condition was regarding easements. That condition has been met. The second condition was a note regarding the, um. That designated area regarding the patent. And that condition has been met. A note shall be placed on the final plat regarding that condition. The, uh, county commissioner's third condition was a response from Willwood Light and Power. That condition has been met. And Willwood Light and Power has confirmed that power is adjacent to each lot. The fourth condition from the county commissioners was a approval of a long-term noxious weed management plan. That condition has been met. The fifth condition by the commissioners was. A, um, a note on the final plat regarding access shall meet road and bridge standards. That condition has been met. The sixth condition from the commissioners. Was a condition on the final plat regarding any crossings of the Willwood Irrigation District facilities. Shall be reviewed and approved by them. That condition has been met. The seventh condition from the commissioners, um, regarding the sketch plan. Was regarding, uh, rights to any stream flow or river flow. That condition has been met. That note is on the final plat. The eighth condition from the county commissioners was regarding an appropriate subdivision improvements agreement, if applicable. That condition, uh, is not applicable. So we believe that a subdivision improvements agreement is not required. The ninth condition from the board accounted commissioners. Was a note on the final plat regarding water quality. That condition has been met. The tenth recommended condition by the board accounted commissioners was regarding water wells shall be permitted by the state. Um, engineer's office. That condition has been met. Eleventh condition by the county commissioners was the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. Note on the final plat. That condition has been met. The twelfth condition from the county commissioners, um, when you reviewed the sketch plan. Was a, a site plan, um, submitted to our department. Evidencing net acreage available for building and the ability to meet setbacks. And we did receive that plan, Madam Chair, so that condition has been met. The plat, this plat was reviewed by the plat review committee. That occurred on December seventh. There were corrections and changes made to the final plat. And then a revised version was submitted to planning and zoning on December eleventh. And that's what you see, Madam Chair, in figure one. We have a summary of findings, Madam Chair. Our recommendation is approval of the final plat of the Heims Homestead MS seventy-five with the following conditions. Number one, we recommend this condition. The applicant shall provide all easements as requested by applicable utilities, special districts. Irrigation districts or public util, public agencies providing services. The width of any utility easement shall be sufficient to allow adequate maintenance of the system. But in no case shall such utilities be less than twenty feet in width. Easements must be identified on the final plat. And our second recommended condition, the applicant shall otherwise comply with standards in the Park County Development Regulations. And the minimum subdivision requirements set forth the Wyoming Statute eighteen-five three oh six. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Is there any questions for staff on this project? Hearing none. But, um, this is not a public hearing, so we move forward with action. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move to approve Heims, uh, Homestead Minor Subdivision Seventy-Five Final Plat.
Second.
As presented.
Okay.
With conditions as presented.
The motion on the floor to approve with conditions as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Want to post?
Number six.
Resolution two twenty-four zero six. Got it.
Zero six. All right. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And I get accused of not paying attention.
Well, that's one today you got. Okay, we have Karen at eleven thirty. Ten minutes.
Be calling correctly if I'm wrong, but our. Voting machines have no connection to the outside world, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. They're a tabulator.
Absolutely.
There is a tabulator.
Yes.
And then in the comments, uh, paper trails. We use.
We got paper ballots.
I don't understand. People do not always use.
Do you have a, do you have, will you have examples of those ballots, samples of those ballots at this afternoon meeting? Can you ask him to? Yeah, cause we do. That's what it.
Their paper.
It's paper. It's a tabulator.
Sure.
And he's walking up the street.
You can actually, but you.
You can walk in off the street.
But you have to register.
But you have to register, right?
Well, what he's referring to is motor voter. Just because you get a, uh.
Okay.
Lloyd screwed up, but we won't go there.
Okay. Uh, it's gonna be a long day.
But I see, I see Nicole got the.
I know, you guys planned it.
Okay, never mind. I guess you're on the email list that we're not.
The cool kids are wearing red.
Like I said, rough day.
Yeah, it's only started.
That's probably true. Okay, we're gonna go ahead with the next thing on our agenda. Um, Karen Horner, Park, uh, Library Director, Park County Libraries Annual Report.
Yes.
Welcome. And if you'd use the mic, please.
Yes.
Yes, of course. So I'm gonna be a fun break for you guys. This will just be fun.
Okay, well, Jeff's coming in the door from the library board, so.
It looks fun.
Yes. We'll have some fun now. Um, so first of all, thank you for allowing me a few minutes just to kind of give you a quick yearly update of what's been happening in the library. Um, and so, of course, as you know, I'm Karen Horner, the Park County Library Director, and Jeff Baumann, the vice chair for the library board is with me. And we are putting out our second annual library report, and I know you guys have it on your computers. And basically, last year, we about the same time, we put our first ever annual report. And we thought it was important to just represent and show the whole county what we're doing with the taxpayer monies that's been given to us by the county and what kind of services we're constantly providing. So this one is a little shorter because that first one, we wanted to explain what an annual report is and what's our purpose. So this one's just a little shorter, and it really just highlights some of the fun things that we've done this year. We thought it was important to always provide statistics because I think people appreciate seeing the numbers and and what we do every year. And also to kind of show some what our outreach van is going and what kind of events they've been doing, some of our programs. And of course, you know, just, we always want to acknowledge. You know, none of this is possible without, of course, the county's support and, of course, the big part of the community support. And I think here in Park County, we all know that we have a wonderful community, and the people really love their library, and it showed with our stats and some of the programs we've done. And this year has been a very busy year for us. And like I said, this is just a snapshot of what we've done. We, you know, we've done some really wonderful things throughout the whole year. Of course, we always have our summer reading program, which is huge in the summer. And we also, this time of year, we provide winter reading. And some of the other fun reading things that we've done, we've done twenty-three and twenty-three, which we encourage people to read twenty-six different type of genres and books. And then, of course, at the end, if you turn in the form, you get a prize. And we've participated and got grants for creative aging. So in Cody and Powell, we were able to provide a lot of creative aging programs for fifty-five and over, and those have been hugely popular. We also provide the Wyoming Library to Business Stations in both Cody and Powell. And do highlights every month. We do a program around that. And that's for local businesses, entrepreneurs. And also another wonderful thing, of course, this year, we is our full official year of our outreach van, and that's been highly popular. We've been to the Beck Lake Challenge. We've been to Farmer's Market. We were in every parade in Powell and Cody and Matiti. And we're at the fair. We have the Walk for Alzheimer's, Gallaghers, up in Clark. And those are just some of the highlights of where we've taken the van. Um, some of the wonderful things that we've added this year have been like we have things like nature backpacks, health kits, blood pressure kits for people to borrow. Um, and then, of course, a couple of our huge big things that we're really excited about. We were able to finally launch a story walk in Powell, which is in the front cover of that, and that was great attended. It was a super cold day, but we're excited, and we've heard nothing but positive things from the Powell community about it being there. And we've also launched called Books Beyond Boundaries, and so it's a homebound service that we provide for people who are homebound, caregivers, you know, with people that are suffering from Alzheimer's, dementia, things like that. Somebody breaks their leg, they can't get out. We'll provide homebound service for them. That is something wonderful we've done. And, you know, of course, our really two big, huge highlights this year, we we were nominated for the Institute of Museum and Library Science. And their national medal. And we applied for that. Congressman Harry Hagman nominated our library system, so we applied for that, and we won't find out till March, so that's exciting. And then, of course, the Cody Library was the runner-up for the best small library in America, so that was really huge and popular. So, yeah, we we've it's been a busy year, and like I said, this annual report, we just want to cut it to provide an update and highlight to the community. It's we put it up on our website today. It's out on social media, and we'll have copies available for anybody that wants to look at it, so just happy to answer any questions.
What else you been doing?
Yeah.
We like to stay busy.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious. Any other commissioners? I just want to acknowledge your staff.
Yes, the staff is amazing. We have the most of all the library systems I've worked at. This is by far the best staff I've ever worked with.
They all do a great job.
They do a fabulous job, yes. And of course, the commissioners, just I know you're familiar with Nicole. And so we were very lucky and happy that she accepted. She's also the assistant director. She's become the assistant director for our Park County Library System, and she does a great job for Cody, and you take a walk out there, you'll see what she's done to the space, so rearrange the furniture. It looks good.
I'd like to make just a short comment about what a great job Karen's doing. It's it's just been a pleasure to work with her, and every time you walk into either of the libraries, I'm more familiar with Powell, come here. There's always something new, even if it's furniture change or something. And the latest I saw was a blind date with a book.
And we always do.
We didn't come up with this stuff.
Libraries, we borrow. We borrow everything.
But it's a great report, and it's a pleasure to be part of the the library board with Karen and her staff.
Thank you. Yep, thank you for the work the board does, too. We have a a year or two ahead of us that are going to be very interesting, but we'll get her done.
Yes, we're excited about that journey and adventure, and yeah. We're already making plans, so.
Cool. Anybody else?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, we started a few minutes early.
We're the fun one. Now you get a. Yes. Yes.
Do you see the number of visits? Oh, I was gonna look at this. This is this is Lloyd's daughter. Is there any resemblance here?
Great. Is there? It's the same as. Same mustache. He came here.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is Billy Wood, Park County Events. The vendor registration form, and this has to do with food truck vendors types, right? Okay. It's all yours.
Okay, so after we after the last change to our rental application, um, there, if we forget which page, we talked about food truck vendors having to fill out an application. So I kind of I I used a lot of the same verbiage in the vendor registration that we have in the rental application. We got a a full page that can go to their insurance companies, making sure that they are covered, just in case anything ever happens. The prices that I used kind of follow our camping registration. If you remember, last year, we had a food truck that wanted to park there at fairgrounds. We talked about being pretty consistent with the prices. Um, so I tried to make these just easy flat rates with a twenty-dollar bill or two twenty-dollar bills. Put on there that the event host would have to approve the food vendors, trying to give them some protection of not having a food vendor just show up out of nowhere that isn't good for them, isn't good for us as a county facility. And I know talking to a couple of our renters that especially use the grandstand events, they really liked this idea. And as well as one of the vendors that I've spoken with.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Yes, sir.
Um, Billy, the this may have been on the part of the old one, but under the the insurance part, is that the same as what it's been? Million-dollar liability, two million-dollar profit that would require.
Yes, sir, and it's also stated on page, sorry, I don't have these. Second to last page, I took those figures right off of the facility use application.
That's nothing new.
No, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
That's pretty standard from what you know for across the this other with other fairs.
Uh, to be honest, Lloyd, I I don't know. I didn't look into that.
Madam Chair, the as far as the two-twenty outlets are, most of the one around Homestead or in Heart Mountain, are they two-twenty?
Um, a lot of them on outside, especially around the open-air pavilion. Almost all of those are two-twenty's. There are some one-tens. Um, and then at each peg, I guess I don't know.
pedestal.
pedestal, yeah, there you go. There's one-twenty and two-twenty outlets.
Oh, okay. How about underneath the grandstands? Are those one-tens?
We have both.
Oh, okay.
We have a lot of power.
We were talking about a little bit more use under the grandstands for this particular fair and maybe the following one due to the library situation. We have no idea what the timing's gonna be, but if if Homestead is used somewhat in that library, then we may move some vendors over underneath, so we want to be sure we had power and things available for that, so. Any other questions for Billy for? Okay, I guess we need pleasure the board to approve using this form for vendor registration.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the format as presented. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? You're on.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, I think with the added people that will be underneath the grandstands on those one-tens, I know we had an issue with it before that they were some of the breakers with crop bots or something. And I think what they were doing was setting up they were getting the power strips and putting them in and had multiple one-tens going into one extension cord, and the extension cord isn't designed to handle those loads.
I know we've had a lot of issues with that in Heart Mountain Hall, people putting the power strips and overloading them because they don't have the kitchen use right now, and so instead of just going to different outlets, they're all in one or.
Yeah.
And I think, and since I've been here, we during like county fair had four vendors underneath the grandstands each year on the north side. Of course, the south sides are bigger garden now.
Right.
And I do think with the library coming in with some of those indoor vendors, I think grandstands is a excellent spot.
Well, I think also if you can maybe do a walkthrough when they're getting set up to make sure they're not using a little Walmart extension cord going into a power strip that might save you some time.
Absolutely.
Breakers, so.
I know both the fire marshal and food, health, safety, I don't think of her name. But she goes, they both of them go through all the
Right.
every single booth, the fire marshal even goes through the carnival.
Okay.
Thank you all very.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
To enjoy dinner.
Thanks.
What time is the O K I meeting?
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to do, because I know this topic is of interest to everyone, but in particular of interest to our legislators that are in the room and Secretary of State, Mr. Gray, who I believe is joining us by Zoom, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. But at this point, we have Senator Larson is here and Representative Newsom and Representative Winters, so we appreciate you being here to hear the conversation. So, thank you. And with that, we only have 30 minutes. We do have other things on the agenda this afternoon, so we'll go as quickly as I can with as much information as they can. But with that, Senator Larson, if you'd like to start, and yes, if you would use the mic, please. Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to start.
Okay. If you say your name for the record, please.
You bet. Okay. Oh gee. Oh.
People in the back can't hear.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Chairman, Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience, the two of us are here at the request of a friend of ours to ask for your blessing to stop machine voting in Park County. I'm Dave McMillan, Precinct Committee Man for the GOP in the Lower South Fork area, and Dan Larson is a state senator representing thousands in the Powell area. We also have, hopefully online this afternoon, our Secretary of State Chuck Ray, who wanted to make some comments and answer any questions you may have from his perspective. This brand new request regarding election integrity started at the December 7th GOP Central Committee meeting with approximately 65 members and guests in attendance. At that time, Larry French asked for a show of hands how many people felt the voting machines were secure. Not one person raised their hand. This brand new request regarding election integrity started, excuse me, what I meant to say, "The public expects and demands purity and full transparency of elections." Without hand count verification, the accuracy of machine tabulation cannot be certain. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention at the beginning, Article 6, Section 13 of the Wyoming Constitution that states, "The legislature shall pass laws to secure the purity of elections and guard against abuses of the elective franchise." However, we also have a statute that says, which by the way is 22-14-114, which prohibits hand counting to verify tabulator results by stating, "For ballots designed to be counted by machine, each individual vote shall be determined by the voting equipment and shall not be determined selectively by human tabulation." Again, the public demands and expects purity and transparency of elections. But right now, we cannot know if legal or illegal votes can be counted or not counted. On the very birthday of former President Ronald Reagan, one of his many famous phrases was "Trust but verify." Well, again, we can't verify if legal or illegal votes were counted or not counted because we're not able to look at the ballots because they're machine generated. Hand counting has a reliable history, is inexpensive, nonpartisan, secure, accurate, transparent, and an efficient method for determining the will of the people in their elections. And all of us can thank Dan Larson for finding the information in December that he's going to present right now.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, or Chairwoman, I'm sorry, and Commissioners. Like it was said, my name is Dan Larson. I'm here with Dave McMillan, representing the group that has been working on getting humans to count the ballots for a couple of years, also joined by, hopefully, Secretary of State Chuck Gray. Thank you for allowing us time to visit with you about the upcoming elections. We are here to request that the board choose to have humans count the ballots by counting boards at each polling place. In the current Wyoming statutes, there are two ways to count ballots, either by machine or by humans, and only one can be chosen. Current statutes do not allow us to use both. I have handed out relevant sections of the statutes that pertain to humans counting ballots. You know, I would like to go through those now. First, I would like to state that, in my opinion, along with others, that when the statutes of Title 22 elections were changed to include Chapter 10 Voting Machines, Chapter 11 Electronic Voting Systems, references to human counting of ballots was left in the statutes. And I emphasize this statement by the number of times counting boards is used in the statutes. It is 23 times that I have found. There may be more. So, to continue, please follow with me through the pages I have handed out. I kind of think they were stapled kind of backwards. It might be difficult to open them up. The first page, and we are in Title 22 Elections, and the first one is 221102 Definitions, and XXI, XXXII anyway, mentions what the definition for tally sheet means. That means the document used to tabulate hand counted paper ballots. I think that's important. It was left in there. Chapter 8, on the second page, Judges of Election and Counting Boards, it refers to counting boards. It tells us when the, on the first one, on A, not later than the third Tuesday of April, in each general election year, each county clerk shall notify the county chairman of the major and minor political parties in the county of the number of election judges and counting board members and alterance needed for the next two years. And then it refers to some other deadlines, and including the chairman in the county of each major and minor political party should get back to her with volunteers for judge, judges of elections, and members of counting boards. And then in C, it mentions it again, a deadline. Then we go to 28102 on qualifications, and it states how he's qualified to be a judge and member of a counting board. And in that paragraph, it states members of counting board three times. On terms, it mentions judges of elections and members of counting boards will be there for two years. If we continue on down, it talks about the appointments that the county clerk shall make on counting boards. This is on page four on Section A. It tells us how many members of the counting boards there should be. And then it says, if the polling place casting more than 300 votes at the last general election, they may appoint a counting board in such polling place in which, oh, okay, it tells you that you will in those where there was more than 300. oh, okay, it tells you that you will in those where there was more than 300. It says you may if there was only 150 or more. And then it keeps telling us obviously how many members there ought to be in the second to the last sentence. "A counting board shall have three members or more to facilitate the counting of votes." Then we go on down to Item C, the counting board, "In a paper ballot polling place has no authority to act until the polls are declared closed as provided." So that's important. In Item D, it says, "For a polling place where a counting board need not be appointed, the judges of the election can count the votes." It also talks about the party representation. It says, "Judges and members of the counting board shall be divided between the participating political parties as nearly equal as possible." Mentions notice of appointment to both judges of elections and members of the counting board. Sorry to keep repeating counting board, but I think it's important that it was left in there and it tells us how to, to deal with these. Talks about training on page five of judges of elections, members of the counting boards. Talks about the training mileage that they might be paid or that they can be paid. On page six, tells us on the compensation for judges of election and members of counting boards. And I think the most important item that we, that needs to be talked about is on page seven, Chapter 10 Voting Machines. In 22-10-102, it says, "Selection by county commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt for use in any precinct in the county a type of voting machine meeting the standards specified." And I want to emphasize you may adopt to use those. It also says the same thing in the next page on Page Eight, Electronic Voting Systems. It, it talks about the same. "The Board of County Commissioners of each county may adopt for use either experimentally or permanently in any election in any or all polling places within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law." And then on the Page Nine, it's Chapter 12, Polling Place Regulations Before Polls Are Open. It describes the materials for judges. And I want to, I underlined on, on V, "Voting machines where required." I would guess that says you don't have to have them. I think I got a couple more pages as all. On 22-12-115, on Page 10, it mentions, "It shall not be removed," we're talking about ballot boxes. "It shall not be removed from the presence of the judges of election or counting boards until all ballots are counted and recorded." They're just describing how at the end of the polling time. In Chapter 14, it talks about polling place regulations after polls close. It mentions returning records and return, and what is returned to the clerk. On Item X, it says tally sheet if ballots are hand counted. And then on the last page, counting of ballots, I just underlined, it mentions for ballots not designed to be counted by machines. And I would guess you're using counting boards to do those. The group I have been working with visited with Secretary Gray a couple of weeks ago and asked these questions. "Is it in the statutes that the commissioners have authority to choose to have machines or humans count ballots?" He said, "Yes." "Do county clerks have the authority to choose the method of counting ballots?" He said, "No." "Does it state in that, does it say in statutes that machines are the only method that can be used to count ballots?" "No." "Does the Secretary of State reimburse expenses for election judges and counting boards?" "They don't. I kind of thought they did, but they don't." "Is there a requirement to get vote tallies to the Secretary of State at a certain time?" He said that it's recommended by 10:30, but not required. In ending, I want to mention the handout that Larry French gave you. First, there are pages talking about the poll he did at various locations, asking people to indicate if they would prefer ballots to be counted by humans or machines. The results are overwhelmingly for humans to count the ballots. It was 152 to 20. Also, he explains the mock election count that was done by about 30 people two years ago. In that trial, it was found that three people in a group could count about 25 ballots in 14 minutes. So about 30 seconds a ballot. Throughout this county, Wyoming and the nation, there is great belief that machines have been corrupted. Maybe not Wyoming, but definitely across the US. The people do not trust them. It would be my hope that in the next few months, you discuss this at a meeting again and you decide humans can count the ballots. I request this topic be put on the agenda for the first week of April to vote on this issue. Maybe you may, maybe you could mail out a questionnaire asking the basic question. Would you prefer machines or humans to count the ballots in elections? And see what the public says. I remember a few years back when we had a questionnaire was sent out about the special use tax, I think we had. Thank you for listening to us.
If Secretary Gray is on the line, if he would like to speak, this would be the time.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Um, yes.
Okay. Well, it's great to be here today. As always, I'm here to listen to the concerns of citizens of our state and of Park County concerned with maintaining the integrity of our elections and to discuss the ways and ideas we go about improving our elections. At the Secretary of State's office, we're always striving to improve election processes. It's, it's one of the things that I always want to follow through on. We're always about improvement. That's why we've issued a rule requiring proof of residency as part of the identification process at the time of registration. And, and this rulemaking also will make sure that illegal aliens will not be able to vote, not be able to vote. It's pivotal that we have clarity and strength requiring evidence of citizenship when registering to vote. And it's very troubling that there are radical political forces on the left around our country attempting to allow illegal aliens to vote. But shifting back to the issue before you today, first, I want to discuss Wyoming law. And I know Senator Larson had a number of citations there. I'd like to focus on Wyoming Statute 22-11-102, which says the following. "The Board of County Commissioners of each county may, may adopt for use either experimentally or permanently in any election in any or all polling places within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law," unquote. And again, I want to emphasize the "may" for the media in the room. So the choice is a matter of decision for the board. I, I know there's been a lot of discussion already about the interaction of this choice with the Wyoming Constitution and the AG opinion concerning public access to cast vote records. But I do believe this matter, that of allowing county clerks and appointed election judges to tabulate is entirely different from public examination, which is what the AG memo was addressing. I think one of the things that is frustrating for, for the individuals here today, it's a frustration I share, which is the lack of a more complete form of verification of the machines. I'm very supportive of providing confidence in our election systems. And I think this request today is attempting to do that. Confidence is pivotal in our election processes. And we would be happy to help in any way we can in administering this with the clerk and the county commission. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Secretary Gray.
Thank you.
I guess I would have one question, Secretary Gray, and that is you referenced the Attorney General's opinion that we have from two years ago that indicated that the ballots could not be hand counted. They were designed for machine, would be counted by machine, and how they saw the privacy laws on the ballots. You have kind of a different, a different take on that, and I understand that. I wonder if there's-
No, 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 that's a misstatement. That's, that's a misstatement. What I'm saying is, and let me be very clear on that, that is not accurate.
Okay.
Again, there's been a lot of discussion about the interaction of this choice with the Wyoming Constitution and the AG opinion concerning public access to cast vote records. This matter, which is allowing county clerks and appointed election judges to tabulate, is entirely different from public examination, which is what the AG memo was addressing. So again, this is a distinct issue. Does that make sense? It's very important to review that memo and the exact thing that that's saying and what that is, the exact colloquy that is being engaged with there and the exact question that was answering that the, two administrations ago, that was not during my time of SOS, but they presented a number of questions to the AG. And, and they're very different, I believe, from what I understand to be the proposal here today.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Senator.
Madam Chairwoman, I would agree with our secretary. I think the question was asked last time was could we have humans count the ballots that the machines already counted? And it is clear in the statutes that you cannot do both. You can neither do one or the other. Our request is to just do hand counts.
My, my understanding of the memo is actually a little different from that, which is that, a little bit, which is the memo was, was addressing public examination, public access to cast vote records, which is very different from allowing county clerks and appointed election judges to tabulate. Now then you get 22-11-102, which provides the discretion, the opt-in, if you will, to an electronic tabulation, quote unquote, an electronic voting system with the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's another section of statute that deals with that issue, which is this question of one or the other. But the AG memo is mainly discussing public access to cast vote records.
Madam Chair, and Secretary Gray, Lee Livingston, County Commissioner, and this might be a question for you or someone else in the audience, but is, are we talking about a difference between electronic voting or electronic tabulation? Because I would see an electronic voting machine where you go up and you vote at the machine and your vote is recorded electronically. And maybe, maybe I'm getting off in the weeds here, but I'm, I, my understanding would be there's two different types of machines. And one that Park County is using right now is an electronic tabulation of the, of the paper ballot already, you know, filled out by hand rather than an electronic voting machine where you hit a touchscreen and record your vote, which I could understand where there might be some, some hesitancy on those. But the way I see what we're doing is I see we're counting the ballots electronically rather than casting them electronically.
Well, I think your question, Commissioner, Commissioner Livingston, deals with the definition of electronic voting system, and I'd have to come back with you on that. I'd like to review that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Secretary Gray and Dan as well. So you're saying that the Park County Commissioners are the ones responsible for the actual function of voting and not the county clerks? They're not the chief election officer then that we're, when we go to vote for a county clerk, it's not about how the elections are taking place?
No, no, sir. I, I believe that's kind of, with all due respect, putting some words into my mouth. 22-11-102 is very clear, which is, "The Board of County Commissioners of each county may adopt for use either experimentally or permanently in any election in any or all polling places within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law." And again, it's a "may." I emphasize that for the commissioners and also the media who often misrepresent what I say. So it, the, the issue of who's the chief election officer of the county and the state is a different section of statute. But 22-11-102 is very clear that the choice on this matter is a decision for the board. That says, again, I will repeat it. Do you have your statute books there?
Yes.
I think it would be good to pull up 22-11-102.
And when you, when you read that, basically it gives the county commissioners the authority to, to pick up an electronic voting system authorized by law. Basically, it, it deals with us as, as being able to pick the electronic voting device, not to decide if we're going to do with hand ballots or the electronic machine itself. This allows us to, with, you know, if there's three different kinds of voting machines, to pick which one that we like.
Excuse me, Commissioners, I'd just like to clarify something that nobody's talking about. The county commissioners may choose to use no machines at all. It's not just electronic voting machines. The reason we're here is to inform you that you can choose not to use machines at all. And that's why we're looking at hand counting and paper ballots.
Yeah, and 22-11, 22-11-102, it reads, "The Board of County Commissioners of each county may adopt for use either experimentally or permanently in any election in any or all polling places within the county, any electronic voting system authorized by law," unquote. And it says "may," the "may" there.
Thank you, Senator Larson.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
I do have the definition that they have in the statutes on electronic voting systems, if, if I could read that.
Sure.
It says, "Electronic voting systems is a system employing an electronic voting device in conjunction with paper ballots or paper card or ballot cards or other system of secret voting and automatic tabulating equipment for the recording, tabulating, and counting of votes in an election."
And, and where is that located at?
It's in Chapter, in Title 22-1002 Definitions. Item 14.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, and I keep coming back to this. The machines we're, we're currently using are not in any way, shape, or form connected to the outside world. And I'm concerned that there's a lot of folks on this bandwagon that don't even know what band is playing. We've got a machine that tabulates the vote. You don't cast your vote at the machine. You cast your vote on paper. It's a, it's a tabula, and then it's tabulated by the machine.
There's stun drops. There's so much room. Well, let's stay with who's allowed today to work through this. And you can certainly give us your questions or your thoughts in writing or email, but let's keep to the conversation that we have going here right now.
You know, I, I, to a certain degree, and I think I might have another commissioner here that agrees with me that, I mean, I'd be open, I was back then, to a throw a dart on the board and pick a precinct and hand count those ballots and see, you know, and see what the machines, what the machines are doing. Because that's what our machines are doing today is counting ballots. They're not taking votes.
But you've just said that you cannot do both. That's what the law says. Secondly, you're referencing to any-
No.
Let's wait. Did you have anything else? I, I do want one other definition as they see it from our elections people. If they would provide us with a definition as they see these statutes that play out. And as Senator Larson said, there's a whole lot of places in here that it talks about counting boards. How do you see that? What does that wording mean to you in the statutes as you've run elections in the past? Because those words aren't new in there. So what does counting board mean to you? Hans, if you would answer that for us, please, as the deputy elections clerk.
Madam Chairman, Hans Odie, Park County First Deputy Clerk. And also along with Katie Johnson, our deputy election, our elections deputy. We pretty much operate all the election facilities and election operations for each election. We, uh, pretty much operate all the election facilities and election operations for, uh, each election cycle. When we see counting boards, you have to actually, when you talk about counting boards, you have to go back to rules because as, uh, as these folks have stated, county boards does, actually, it, it appears all over in the statute. But when you go back to the Secretary of State's rules that have the same force as law, says that right on the rules website, county boards refer to an operation when the county clerk decides to bring uh, the ballots back to a central location to be run through the machine. It is not referred to hand counting in any way.
Thank you.
That's chapter twenty-seven of rule, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, it's clear to me that we have some research to do from everything that's been said here today in reading those statutes and, and it's certainly possible that we may ask for another AG's opinion with clearer wording. Um, we don't want to go against the Constitution of Wyoming, and we don't want to break the law. So we need to figure out what we can and can't do according to the state to make sure that our election is counted. Um, and, and if it is possible to check after results are tallied done and turned in, not double count, not count at the same time, but would they allow us, after everything's said and done, the election's done, all that, could we allow a precinct to be counted and checked and verified? And that would give us, I mean, I'm just talking about things we might possibly look at and, and what is out there. Um, we don't have real long to get this figured out, so we can certainly look at having it on the agenda in April. I know that's before signups for any of the electrics, election issues. So hopefully we would have an answer by then, but I think I, I for one need to do a little more research on what I've heard today and what the statutes say and what Secretary State, um, Gray has said. Yes.
So when I circle back to the, uh, and I'll hit Boone's point real quick, because it is, it is correct. You can't hand count and you can't electronic tabulate according to state statute. But we have three members of the legislature here, and if, is that something that needs fixed? Maybe we need to look at fixing it. Is, because I, I would, I would support just to satisfy the folks that are, have doubt. A, I don't want to, I, I think, like I said, throw it out to the precinct and let's hand, and let's hand count those after the machines. The, everything I've researched, the machines are highly, are a lot more accurate than hand counting. You know, but I can go on the internet and find anything I want. If I want to find something that says they're not, I guarantee I can find it. If I want to find something that says they are, I guarantee I can find it. So when we just take, if we want to do something along those lines, it looks like it's, it's a statute change before we can.
Uh, since you're going to spend a little time doing some more research, I just wanted to point out a couple things. Uh, since we last spoke a couple of years ago, um, where we're, oh, we only had a handful of instances of election fraud that has been adjudicated in our country. As of two weeks ago, we have over one thousand five hundred cases that have been adjudicated in regards to election fraud across this country. And you could verify that information through the Heritage Foundation or the Association of Mature American Citizens, commonly known as AMAC. The other thing I wanted to mention that we didn't have time to discuss is that um, it was mentioned that we had thirty people participating in a mock election that we did two years ago, where actually Governor Gordon came to visit and witness. We actually had fifty-six people. And I wanted to mention that because a lot of these people in this room took their time and several hours to do a mock election so we could get a better idea of how long it would take again for people to count paper ballots. The second go around that we did with these people who stayed to finish, we got it down to thirty-two seconds per ballot, both front and back of a ballot. Now, yes, we did use three people to do that. Okay, two people counting, one observing, but they just, they just turned them out in thirty-two seconds at the second go around. So I know we're capable of doing this. This weekend, there's going to be a resolution presented at the State GOP Committee Meeting, uh, in Lovell, where all the counties are represented here in Wyoming. That resolution is basically pertaining to exactly what we're talking about today. So every county in the state's going to know what's going on by this weekend.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got four weeks of the legislators getting together. That's scary in itself.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but we know because of what's going on this weekend and we're getting around, that they're going to be talking about election integrity, because by April, everybody's going to be thinking about the election. And if, after we saw what happened two years ago during the election season, it's good that you do some investigation, you wait a few weeks to make a decision. We just like an answer by the first week of April, because there's enough time.
Okay.
To do everything afterwards.
I agree with you. We'll certainly, we'll certainly work on that. Yes, Senator.
Thank you. Um, thank you for letting us, uh, speak to you about this. I would, uh, I would like to encourage you to maybe do some sort of questionnaire out to the public. I don't know how you could be done, but I think you'd be surprised.
You want those results tabulated by hand?
That would be okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We are out of time today, so.
We'll talk in charge. Yep. See you, Sam. Yeah.
Well, and I think it is good that the legislators will see this and have that conversation before they go down there, so they can have. If there's things that can be tweaked ahead of time, maybe we can get that done. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Secretary Gray. Appreciate you being on the call.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, they handed it out. Dan handed it out ahead of time.
You need to flip it off.
Backwards. If, if you wouldn't mind clearing the room for your discussions, we do have things on the agenda. Thank you. Please allow us to go on with our meeting. If you would clear the room, please, so we can move forward.
A lot of folks can't hear. They're not paying attention.
What am I?
Done about it. They're going. It's just so hard to hear anyways.
What's that?
Well, I'm looking. I want.
Yeah, okay.
On the side. I'm more confused than I was before.
Do you want him to come back up at two thirty? You want him to come back up at?
Well, I mean, for women looking at it.
No, just tell me if you want him to come back up, because I'll go ask him. It's two, we're done at two thirty. Do you want me to ask him to come back in?
If you don't think it's basics. Well, basically in reference to twenty-two fourteen dash one fourteen, it says, "A house designed by Kevin Kitz." Uh, I'll get you a bunch of photos and shit made up anyway. I read that, but I'm not finding it out in my thinking. So which one of these? How you read a statute? How do you get two different statutes? I'm saying nothing. I know, and he does say in Park.
"Ballast designed with a each one shall be determined by voting equipment."
Is Becky Ransom, Executive Director with Yellowstone Behavioral Health Center, with an MOU regarding emergency services in Park County. Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind using the mic, we're having a whole lot of sound issues, so.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm Becky Ransom with the Yellowstone Behavioral Health. I'm joined today with
My name is Mary Johnson. I'm currently the CEO of Cloud Peak Counseling Center, and I will be the CEO of our new organization, Oxbow Center.
So our purpose, um, today is twofold. Um, we're excited to announce an upcoming merger that is happening between Yellowstone Behavioral Health Center, which serves Park County residents with behavioral health services. We're joining with Cloud Peak Counseling Services in Waschiki County. Um, they provide mental health and substance use services in Waschiki County and also with Big Horn County Counseling Services in Big Horn County, um, who also provides behavioral health and substance use services. So together we are joining forces um, to become a new organization called Oxbow Center. Oxbow is going to serve all three counties. Um, there will be no changes, um, in existing services to county residents. Uh, actually, we're going to be enhancing services and increasing services, um, which is one of the benefits of this merger. So we wanted to, uh, alert you to this upcoming, uh, merger that is scheduled for April first, twenty twenty-four. So at that time, um, we will become Oxbow Center. Uh, our clients in all three counties will not notice changes, um, other than the sign above the door, um, will change. So uh, we wanted to make you aware of, uh, what was coming. And then also before you, you have a memorandum of understanding um, that we are requesting with the Park County Detention Center. Um, we currently, as part of our emergency services, um, that we provide to the county, it includes Title twenty-five evaluations um, and services at the detention center. Uh, Title twenty-five evaluations are, uh, risk assessments, um, that we conduct for individuals who may be at risk for, uh, suicide or homicidal intent. So we are called in to perform these evaluations. Um, we provide the, uh, those in the emergency rooms um, throughout Park County as well as at the detention center. This MOU talks, um, through the services that we are, uh, providing as well as expectations between us and uh, the, the detention center. Um, the draft has been submitted to, um, the Sheriff Stewart and as well as Lieutenant Torzan and shared, I believe they shared it with, um, uh, the county attorney. So this is the beginning, and we're opening the discussion for, um, any suggestions, um, any comments that you have, um, as well as any comments that anyone would have, uh, regarding the MOU. This is a, a partnership. Um, we exist to serve, um, the clients that need our services, and so we are, um, just asking for support today of our MOU.
Thank you.
We stand for questions?
First of all, thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Important to all of us. Any questions?
I have just a short one. Um, do you see your job getting easier?
Personally, my job?
Yeah.
Um, I'm very excited about the challenges ahead, but.
As Commissioner, I've heard many negatives about Title twenty-five since I became a Commissioner and how it needs repaired, fixed. Um, is it getting better?
That is a, a legislative, that's a state issue, not a Park County issue.
We had three, now we have two in the room still, so.
The Title twenty-five process is complex across the state, and what we know is that even across three counties, the process looks different. And so our goal, um, bringing these centers together is to make that as uniform as possible to the service delivery for the clients so that they know what to expect and they feel supported throughout the process wherever they are in the counties that we serve. But it's not getting easier.
There's been somewhat sarcasm.
Agreed. Other questions? Um, do you want a vote of support for the MOU, or do you think that's necessary? County Attorney Sorek has.
I don't know what everyone even talked about. You're the one for the tensions.
It's a, it's Daryl.
Right.
It's just with.
No, it's with the Daryl.
I just want to make sure we want.
Okay, so there are some changes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And a- absolutely.
Okay, I think basically we're supportive of the process where you're heading. Yeah. Yep, okay. Okay.
Yeah, you have our full non-monetary support.
Not asking for money today, but I'll.
No problem. Appreciate you coming in and letting us know what's happening.
Uh, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Don't get caught up.
Wow.
Hanging on it.
You.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You going out there?
Yeah, I'll go out there.
Okay.
What the heck?
This ought to be good.
Yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna zoom in on this one.
We still have, still have a court, we can.
Yeah, we can.
Can you go out? Would you please? Shooting on them. State chief. You want to, you want me? Some representative news? Mayor? What happened? I don't have to be up here. You guys, you guys run the updates.
That discussion will.
No, okay, I'll, I'll.
So.
Sounds good.
The next thing on our agenda is a discussion, um, with the commissioners and regarding the state shooting complex discussion and applications. So if you would go ahead, Commissioner Livingston, who is our liaison to the committee.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, Lee Livingston, Park County Commissioner. I, uh, just want to give you a brief update on the state shooting complex. Um, as you know, I think it was last session that they voted to support it to the tune of ten million dollars, this legislation, legislators did. And now we're in the process of trying to get Park County as the, uh, the place for this state shooting complex. It's going to be a, quite the facility, supporting all venues of the shooting sports, shotgun, rifle, pistol, even archery. Uh, we believe that this could be a boon to the community. There's an estimation of each one of these big events that comes into the county could bring upwards of around five hundred thousand dollars in an economic stimulus to this county. So we're working on it. When I say we, there's a, a working group that's been put together. Um, multiple members on it, including Mayor Hall and Representative Newsom. Um, the first task was to see if we had a site that would work. It appears that we have, possibly have two sites that would work for this. The, uh, the way we're headed with this is to do all this with state land versus federal land. We don't want to try and get into a long-term, a, uh, long-term agreement or rental or lease, whatever with federal land, given the problems that that could, that it could arise from there. So using state land made the most sense. Um, we're working forward and getting a initial proposal put together into the legislators by March one. And with that, the proposal is to create a, kind of a joint powers board, make it a five oh one C three, where we could accept monies and work towards getting this, uh, proposal moved forward. And then there's a final, the, where there were, the first proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, first proposal was March first, and then there's a second proposal that we got to get in. When is that? Yeah, in May. But so with that, um, it's been kicked around to ask various organizations to pony up and help move this forward. Um, the James Klessens with Forward Cody has kind of been spearheading this effort. And it is anticipated that around twenty-five thousand would help us get preliminary design, um, do some PR work and get this proposal pushed across the finish line and hopefully have that, um, facility located in Park County. So with that, I stand for questions unless my fellow committee members have anything to add.
Couple of questions. Um. Said the complex would be less than fifteen minutes from town. What town?
Cody.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry about that. It was, this is, this is, this was kind of a hurried up deal put together and.
Now, is there some competition right now with other, other communities?
There is, um, and Mayor Hall might
Sure.
step in there.
So as, uh, Commissioner Livingston mentioned, uh, the first go around here is open to any community in the state of Wyoming. Uh, I think within the Big Horn. I think within the Big Horn Basin, Hot Springs County has, has mentioned that I think they're going to put in a potential bid. I have, I've had mixed people tell me whether or not Waschke or Worland was going to do that. I've been told that Big Horn County is, sorry about that, guys. I've been told that Big Horn County is kind of removing themselves from, from any kind of desire to go after this. I, I think that a lot of the, the attributes that the legislators or the, the decision makers within the state are looking at are communities that can handle. As Commissioner Livingston said, that five, you know, if we're going to have, I think like the minimum I've heard for some of these shot shows is to bring in about 250 people. More like 500 for a lot of these events that happen that are nationwide and probably even people from all over the world. So Cody obviously makes a very good candidate. We have the infrastructure through our, our tourism, our hotels, our restaurants. I, I do know the Mayor Powell is supportive of our, of our endeavors to go after this for the city of Cody. And I believe Rebecca Burns is also on our committee who's with Pep and the Powell Chamber of Commerce. So I think overall, we have at least the full support of the Park County area.
And Chair, which group will be making the decision on this at the state level?
So there is a state task force that was created by the governor, legislators, industry leaders and other industry educators. State Parks is part of the task force as well as game and fish. And so what will happen is these proposals will go into that task force. And what I have from my notes timeline wise is that the RFPs, this first round doesn't eliminate anyone. The March deadline doesn't eliminate anyone. I think it's an opportunity for commit, for communities to look at their infrastructure and look at themselves and maybe kind of decide whether it's important to them. I know Rock Springs made an announcement that they dropped out because they didn't have community members that were willing to step up and take the lead on this. And so I think as, as communities go through this RFP, it'll, it'll become clear to them whether they should continue or not. We're committed because we believe we have the infrastructure. And now that we've identified land that's appropriate, they wanted between 18, 800 and 2,500 acres, which is a large swath of land, and we believe we've identified that piece of land. So as we go through this process, we believe that that because we have hotel rooms, so that's another challenge that a lot of communities have, is that they don't have enough hotel rooms to host these things. And when the, the committee met here in Cody on November 17th, and we arranged a private tour of the Cody Firearms Museum along with dinner. We arranged for them to go to the Cody Firearms Experience and shoot the Gatling gun and, and take advantage of all the fun that's out there. And we also arranged a tour of Gunworks for them. And when my fellow legislators said, boy, you went to a lot of work. And I said, no, I didn't. I made three phone calls. These are things that exist in our community. And so I think that we are in a good place to be able to get this award. But the challenge will become beyond, beyond the 10 million because I don't believe that 10 million is enough. And then what is the ongoing cost of running a facility like this? Those are the challenges that we're going to face. I would like to see us create an endowment that could then, the interest off that endowment could run the facility or help with offset the cost of any losses for the day-to-day operation of the facility. I don't know that it's an if you build it, they will come facility. I hope it is, but I don't know if that's true.
Madam Chair, committee members, first I want to thank you guys a lot for the, the time that you put in. I did go to the what did you call?
The task force meeting.
Task force meeting in, I believe it was December, early December.
Late November.
When they were up there. At any rate, we're at stage one of putting together a letter correctly, right? And then it will, then they will create, and I'm asking more of a statement here of the process. They will come up with a RFP that will be put back out to the communities of interest. Excuse me, and, and based on our letters is how they are going to put together the RFP as to what they, what they want and what they like. Looking at your letter, I know you said you put it together somewhat pretty, pretty quickly and it, it looks great. The one thing that I would right off the top of my head that needs to stand out also is the amount of gun manufacturers that we have in our area that you didn't mention. I think we kind of hit on all the things that I believe I heard from the task force that they're looking for as far as a community. You mentioned Hot Springs. Is there any other in the Big Horn Basin that are interested at this point?
I think Riverton, the Riverton area has been pretty active, their, their group.
But in the Big Horn Basin, the only other one that I've known for sure was in the Bay was Hot Springs County. And then, like I said, I, I've been getting, some people said, yes, Worland, Waschke was going to put some the mayor of Worland a while ago told me that they weren't, but that could.
So if I could, on our letter of interest is, I believe is what we're going to be sending, correct? Who all will be signing off on that? I mean, anybody and everybody that we can think of for support? I can see commissioners, mayors.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to gain that support from, from our government entities because you all are key. You know, if we, if we create a new road, which may be a county road to this property, we would assume that the county would then take care of it and that you would be amenable to taking care of it. So there's lots of government infrastructure that's going to need to happen at the site, and we're hoping to have support from our governmental entities.
And I'm just, I guess my question is, how many, how many different entities within our county should we want? Or do you want to limit it to just elected if? Or James Klessens, and you mentioned Rebecca, I mean, our economic development as well. And I could see not having too many signatures on that letter, but maybe they want a sample. I don't know.
Madam Chairman and Commissioner Thiel, yeah, I think what you've, what you're hitting on is, is exactly what the we, the composition of our group is relatively broad. We have economic development people. We have some. Well, we have a representative actually from Gunworks has been sitting on our Garrett Wall. Is, was sitting with the, in that group. And so what I think with this first one, I don't, I think quality will be good, quantity for sure, but I think we get the main resources within the area as far as government. I do think we get a few. You know, make sure our gun, our gun manufacturing industry, which by the way, I did not know this until the Wyoming Business Council showed me that we have the most, the highest concentration of firearms manufacturers in the state compared to any other community, which is something we will put in that letter. Claude, James Klessens and I did a little road trip to the shot show recently and we actually met with a lot of individuals that represent some of these other firing or you know, shooting events. I met specifically with a couple of folks from the, the Whittington group that, that is a firearms complex in New Mexico. And, and also a few, Klessens met with a few people that are maybe some of the celebrities that go to these events, like a Daniel Horner, Phil Vallejo, I mean, some people that, that are world renowned for their shooting expertise. And so we were trying to see about maybe getting some of those folks to, to at least support our endeavors. A lot of those people have been to Cody, one of them is from Cody. So, so I think we're, we're trying to cover a lot of the bases and to represent the support that I think that there is for this beyond just the county and the cities.
My thoughts were Matt, back, you know, we did the congressional tour and bringing something like this to Park County is not just going to benefit Park County. I mean, it's going to benefit Big Horn County, Waschke County, all of the Big Horn Basin, including Hot Springs. And if we could, I don't know if it's too early to try to bring them on board to support or not. Just simply because I guarantee you, anybody comes, they could get that many people coming here. Some of them maybe want to go up and see the medicine wheel or whatnot. So I, I, you know, there's, there's great benefit there and I believe we would have their support. You know, I don't want to go in direct competition with Hot Springs County, but I mean, I would, I would support one in Hot Springs County if we can't have it here. So I, I do believe that the Big Horn Basin as a whole could be bidding in on, on this, not just Park County. Although we are going to probably receive the best, the most benefit from it. But I think it's a great system report. I really like Commissioner or Representative Nusant's ideas of supporting further down the road. That's my biggest concern is building something we can't afford.
Madam Chair. As far as the state task force, will they be expecting a design on these applications?
No, the task force has specifically said that once the the property is awarded, that the state will take on the design task, that the state will pay for the design, given that the property is, is the right kind of property to have a shooting complex on. And we believe we've identified a couple of properties that would be good and both are state parcels. So that they want to take on the design work, which is great because they can bring in expertise that we could not afford. And so that would be better. I'm going to mention one of, so we have a couple of superpowers in this whole process. We have Yellowstone National Park 50 miles away. The other thing we have is the Buffalo Bill Center of the West. And they are, they have the ability to create shoots with their industry partners. They have the ability like no other community in our state to actually create events. Other communities in our state will have to go out and attract events, existing events, maybe cannibalized from other shooting complexes. But we have the ability with our partnership with the Center of the West. Bruce Sowers and Danny Michaels from the Center of the West are on our committee. And I, I think that's, that's our defining thing is that we have the ability to create our own events. We're not sidelined by having to, to be beholden to the industry. We can drive that.
Yeah, one thing about, about this, it, it's been said that this is Park County's to lose. We have, we have what it takes and everything in spades to have this facility here in Park County. We've, as Mayor Hall spoke, they were out at shot show and visited with some folks. I'm going to be on a call with USA Shooting on Friday. And these are some folks that have already had events here at our little complex over here. They like it. They like coming to Cody. They like bringing their events to Cody. Facility is one thing. You can, you can set up a shooting range anywhere. But what I'm hearing is we like coming to Cody because there's so much to do. So I think, I think we've got a good shot at this and I guess this is, I don't, I'm, I know we're going to ask for money from the commissioners and so I'm not going to be the one that asks. I'm going to, I'm going to wait for that to come some, from another source, from another place. But I think this is something that we ought to really think hard about getting behind and supporting.
So there's no request from us today except information where, where we're headed.
Heads up, heads up.
Heads up.
It's coming.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Representative Nusant, I think I rethink the word endowment coming from a town with an aquatic center. Maybe ways to invest or allow it through the state.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, Commissioner Mangle, I, I think, yeah, absolutely you're right to, maybe that's not the right word. But the, the idea is that we need to create an ability to, for this to be sustainable. And part of that sustainability has to be that we have to have some backup plan in those years that are not as productive as other years to be able to sustain a staff and maintenance and all those things that go with a facility of this caliber and this size.
I think Cody's already had a little bit of a, of a feeling toward that on a rec center that we have. So we need to be careful that we don't put ourselves in that position. Representative Winters, thank you for being here.
Just thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I just thought I should maybe give you a little insight as to what I know about the, what's going on around the state.
Okay.
It's my understanding that Hot Springs County's got theirs pretty well figured out what they want to do. But Fremont County is, is working hard to get theirs ready to go as well. And they have at least one and maybe two sites. And I, I think one or two of them are near Shoshone, which would have certainly helped Park County. But at the same time, I, I like the, the folks that were just here talking about the things that can benefit the Big Horn Basin and as a whole. And I know that Fremont County is willing to support wherever this may, this site may occur, especially if it's up in this part of the, of the state. They're, they're high on keeping it away from Casper, let me say that. And I understand that Rock Springs, Sweetwater County is backed out. And I think it was already indicated that Big Horn County is backed out. I don't know about Waschke County, but I've been out to the site here in Park County and, and I don't, I don't know of another place that would be any better. So I just want to encourage you to keep going forward. It's going to, it's going to be a real benefit to the state of Wyoming, but especially to this end of the state. And so Hot Springs County is, is going to benefit from this as well a lot. If, because Hot Springs has got the hot springs, as you well know, to attract people. And with, I've been thinking about a way to create a bus service or something from this site to, to Hot Springs County each day, which I think we would get a lot of use from that. And then it was mentioned that folks could go to the medicine wheel in Big Horn County. There are just so many benefits up in this part of the state that I just want to keep encouraging you to work that direction. And I commend you for all you've done so far. So thank you.
Thank you.
John, it's the wrong time of year to have a scope bite on your nose.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is we actually have an interview for a position on the Park County Historic Preservation Committee. So if we could do that for a few minutes, and then we will have an update from the Cody Conservation District. So hi, must be our interviewee. So you're sure welcome to come up. Yes, sir. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. This is probably five minutes, 10 minutes? Maybe. They're still talking. We can go ahead. Thanks for applying.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Can you of course state your name for the record? And then if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Preservation Committee.
So my name is Susan Fletcher. I am new to Park County. I just moved here to become the Director of the McCracken Research Library at the Buffalo Bill Center of the West. I'm from Colorado Springs and when I was in Colorado Springs, I had served on the city's Historic Preservation Board. So I, you know, I, I like historic preservation and I'm really looking forward to getting involved in the Cody community and Park County and just giving back to the community in that way.
Thank you. Pretty good resume.
Yeah.
There you go.
Any questions?
No, just real quick, thank you for applying. Have you, as, other than that board, have you sat on any other boards?
Yes, I currently sit on, well, it's a more of a committee than a board. I'm involved in the American Association for State and Local History. So I'm involved in several of their awards committees at the regional level. We, we're, I am on a, also the chairwoman of their Religious History Committee as well over there. In Colorado Springs, I was the treasurer for the Children's Museum Board. So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thiel, anything?
I really don't have anything. I do, just thank you for, for stepping up and, and requesting to be on the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner?
How did you run into Brian?
So I know Brian because of his work in the Park County Archives and he's been very hospitable to me. And, you know, told me about the commission. So, yeah. And he's been very hospitable to me and, you know, told me about the commission. So, yeah.
And you just mentioned your work as treasurer. One of the things that this group has is grants that come through on occasion. So have you worked in areas where grants have been, you need to meet grant requirements and that type of thing for this kind of work?
I, not, not writing grants. I did an internship at the Division of Historic Preservation and Archaeology in Indianapolis. And part of that internship involves helping them review grants. So I've been on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
You understand some of the conditions that grants can come with.
I do.
Got to watch for that. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all we need to know.
Okay.
And we will let you know, or Molly will.
Right, okay. All right, thank you so much. Nice to meet all of you.
We just don't usually mean that.
Saint Molly of Ocon.
I don't care. Pleasure to board. We have, we've had two or three vacancies on that board for a long period of time.
So, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Susan Fletcher to the Park County Historic Preservation Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Susan Fletcher to the committee. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
One for Molly. At least you give her.
Okay. The, the last thing on our agenda today, very quickly, Cody Conservation District Annual Update. And then we would like to have a quick discussion with you all. Possible. So Cody Conservation, are you on your own? If you want to give us 15 minutes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have moved, we go into executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Go ahead and have a seat. That's great.
Melon one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's pretty cool.
Got her last Easter.
Yeah, I have the Dutch shepherd that's they're very similar.
Lloyd has that same sign do not pat on the back.
My nephew had a nine one.
Lloyd's sign is on.
Okay, with that annual update from the Cody Conservation District.
Hold the mic.
Oh, you use the mic.
Use the mic, please.
Yeah, pull the mic in close.
I see you use your microphone, please.
Mine, okay.
You want me to use mine?
If you would, for the record, if you'd please identify yourselves, that'd be great.
Russell Dwyer and Carmen McIntyre is with me. I'm the Chair of the Cody Conservation District. She's our watershed coordinator and our primary employer, primary employee rather. Just wanted to give you an update on the funds you had given us from the or allocated for us from the America Rescue Quinn. It was a total of including the office space gives total of eighty four thousand seven hundred eighty one dollars. This year we've turned that into grants of nine hundred and six as you can see there. Just as a caveat, we only have you expended actually half of that for a full time employee and a summer hire. We will do the same next year. So the money you gave us to cover twelve months of employee employer employee rather is going to end up covering almost twenty four months of employee. So I told you, we try to make it stretch it as far as we can and do the best we can with it. We did however, this year on our N A C D grant, which is our primary funding mechanism for employees because most of the grants we get don't have administrative sections in them. So we we get it. We go for an N A C D grant every year, which is a National Association of Conservation Districts and it's funded through N R C S, which is a division of USDA. And they they cut us fifty thousand, yeah, a little over fifty thousand dollars when they funded it. So it's done. Well, we've realigned it. We've got the position we tried to fill last year with readvertise for another full time field tech and we'll see how that goes. We reached out to Northwest College for our summer hire this year to for the the field portion to try to get somebody local or somebody who wants to reside here and wants to hang around for the summer. We try to get it to them early enough that when the students are planning their summer, you know, we can get in on the front side instead of taking the leftovers.
Okay. Cool.
And. One thing if I can also note too is that with the N A C D funding, the the decrease was basically because there's a growing interest in those funds across the state. And so you have a situation where we have more conservation districts applying for those funds. But the national allocation is remaining the same. So it was basically it was something where there were more people approved for funding and that those that did, we all received a cut to stretch the dollars for more districts.
Okay. I appreciate the way you've you've worked out the funding that we haven't been able to do or that you've been able to deal with. Okay.
Going forward, we're still still going to come back and ask for a to go for a mill levy again. We're doing we've been we're didn't want to rush it this year. Number one, and this year I don't really want anything with my name on it on the ballot just because it's going to be a it's going to be a year. And there's some things we want to some groundwork. We want to lay before the next attempt at it. The other thing I'd like to sort of float and you don't have to answer now. Give us some thought. Couple of years ago, I guess they did. They changed the way the weed and pest was funded from a requested mill levy to a legislative mill levy. What would the opinion of the commissioners be? Or would you be supportive of them actually changing the way the legislation is written for the conservation districts to make it so that instead of a we have to go back continually to the ballot where it's just legislated? And then we ask you, we when we need a half a mill this year, would that how would you guys be supportive of something like that?
So basically, I mean, I'm a little bit for first first question on for it, but but then are you taking it out of the out of the voters' hands is my concern. And I know what was done with the the weed and pest, but is that is that the optics? Is that going to be the optics? Do you see what I'm saying?
I I don't know if that's going to be the optics because honestly, the only place there there's two unfunded conservation districts in the state. There's seven others that are funded by the commissioners, not a mill levy. So there's nine people or nine conservation districts in seven counties that would be that would it would actually affect the taxpayers the amount the taxpayers paid. Does that make sense? So you most of the people in the state across the state would see no difference. We will. We, of course, here would see the biggest change.
And I guess, and again, I I in a in a way I support it, but I also see some folks coming in and saying, hey, we voted, we didn't want it. We we voted it. We we didn't vote for it. We voted against it. And then now you're now the legislation is just saying we have to have it. That would be that's the optics I was talking about.
Yeah, and I understand those. And that's one of the things we I've talked about when it was first broached with me is, you know, instead of the 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 I guess the upside is that people get to see what it does. Maybe it'll be easier for us to find supervisors instead of twisting the same arms every time. Maybe more people will be interested in it at that point. I don't see us. I don't see us using alternate funding any less. I mean, it's still the thing you give us, you know, fifty thousand, we can make it a whole lot more than that. Because a lot of the projects you don't want to have to write checks for out of your budget. You want to have employees to do to chase the grant funding to the grants are out there. We may as well go forth, get them and spend them here locally. So it's just it was we talked about at the W W A C D meeting and that they said, you know, find out how your commissioners feel, find out what the thoughts are out there.
And I'm sure. So how many conservation districts are there in the state?
Thirty four.
Okay.
We have three in this county.
So the other twenty five are receiving some sort of a mill.
Yes.
Whether it's one half, whatever it might be.
Correct.
And the only way to what you're suggesting is not done here, but at legislative level of converting it to a a state funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, state mandates.
State mandated state legislative, I mean.
I'm just I'm thinking aloud here is careful what you wish for. And I mean, sometimes you might lose a little control here of what you may have right now versus Cheyenne dictating what you can do and where your money has to go.
With with House Bill sixty, we lost a lot of like because we'd already been doing training and they said we had to redo training. So all of us had to redo all the training we already did. So there's yeah, you're going to lose control because there's going to be different steps, but it the appearance appearance would be we would still we still have to do the budget we still which we have to anyway. We still provide you guys with the budget. So I mean, the process from what I understand wouldn't change. It would be we'd be we push closer though with our grants to having to pay a firm to audit us annually because once we clip four hundred and ninety nine, once we hit clip four hundred ninety nine thousand total money through a budget, we have to get an audit. And with the level one studies and stuff like that, that's not that's not that far off.
So I'm sharing Lloyd, I correct if I'm wrong, Russ, but I I believe what you're saying is it is it's if it comes from legislature legislature, it's not being funded by the state. It's just saying that that mill is guaranteed much like your fire departments and everything that the mill is guaranteed. It's not state funds.
No, it's not.
It's still a mill.
It's just.
It just says you have to do it. It's kind of like your fire departments. We can't the school this, you know, our citizens can't vote to to not give the fire department a mill.
I see.
Yeah.
And I think they would still word it up to one mill. I don't think.
And what's the bill number going for?
It's not.
Have you spoke to any legislators about putting this into?
Individually, I have not spoken to anybody. It was we it was in a board. It was a W A C D board meeting, you know, we're voting on, you know, we're doing stuff for W D A and one of the questions came up because we get eight thousand eighty eight hundred and twenty four dollars from W D A. We've gotten that same eighty eight hundred and twenty four dollars from W D A for I will say I say at least fourteen years. There's some people that say it's been twenty years, but I know it's fourteen because that's how far back I can track it. And you, we all know that fourteen years ago, eighty eight hundred dollars was a part time individual. You know, now because it's state money, they tell us we need this, 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 and this. Oh, yeah. By the way, that's four thousand of that money gone, spending it on stuff we have to have for them. So that leaves us four grand of.
I'm sure, Russ, I would recommend pursuing that with some of our local legislators. I don't think it would happen this year.
Oh, no, no, it's.
But I think getting the ball rolling, getting it getting it out there. It's a piece of legislation that could happen next year.
Yeah, right now it's they just wanted to see the the board wanted us to everybody, all the supervisor or the area directors to get with.
Think about it.
Think about it and talk to the commissioners and see what their thoughts were. So.
Do you have any idea of those twenty five, what mill they are receiving?
I do not. It can only be up to one. I think Teton just renewed theirs at half because they do it every four years. I think it's a half. I don't quote me on that, but I think it's a half.
Appreciate it.
Anything else?
If you guys ever have any questions, emails there, feel free to.
Thank you.
Feel free to.
Yes.
There are some big numbers in this.
That is one thing that comes back to mind when you've talked about, you know, people knowing what you all do. I don't think people realize that until they're either involved in the subdivision process or, you know, something comes up like the Willwood. I mean, when the when it gets thrown around. As we work into the new rules and regulations and we have meetings in different areas around the county, talking about requirements with subdivisions and and how our rules read might be helpful if you can to have somebody there that is involved and at least get it mentioned enough around that, you know, the work you do do and and trying to be careful with what happens in the care in the county.
Yeah, and we're going to try to be involved in good to the rules portion. But again, that's some of it staffing.
Right. No, I understand. Yeah.
Four supervisor or three supervisors out of town, one sick and that left that leaves me and Carmen and an intern. And if I'm going to have somebody go to him, it would be Carmen over the intern because the intern is short fixed period of time and they're drinking from a fire hose for the first six months and then you know.
No, that's understandable. So, okay.
Appreciate it for your time.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second into adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? There are none. Have to go about that one, but.